...to the board docs, which are the impact statements of the positions that were included in the superintendent's recommended budget. We also have the informational class size adjustments, the information on what a potential 5% cut would be, and also what the version 2.0 adjustments were. Those were similar, some of those were similar to what was posted at the last meeting last Wednesday.
Level by level, building by building, impact on cutting class sizes, and we, I know we have some building-
Increase in class.
Increase in class sizes, I always say that. And I know we have some building level administrators here, so we want to get you in and out. So if you want to come up to the table, pull up a chair so that if you're going to speak, you can have a mic available to you. I would appreciate that. If I can find all my documents.
Do you want to do that in maybe a particular order, start with elementary and move up through secondary?
Why don't we-
Because we have so many, I don't know if we could all-
Yep, that would be, yes, that would be great, so-
No, I'm just having like a whole group-
I don't think so.
...helping around.
Great. Just going to get my glasses. Well, thank you for being with us this morning. If you could introduce yourselves as you speak to the TV audience. I don't know if you want to start out with something, or we just delve into questions, it's up to you. If you wanted us to know something, frame your discussion.
I'm Kevin Cuppitt, I'm the principal at Carroll Manor, and I'm certainly okay with just fielding questions.
Okay.
I'm Jason Bowser, I'm the principal at Valley Elementary, and as well, I'll be okay to answer questions at your discretion.
Great, thank you. All right, so I think everybody got the backup for, we have Attachment A and B for elementary schools. Adjusted class sizes is Attachment A. All right, did anyone have a question for these gentlemen?
I don't think mine is under letters.
I do want to comment on the attachments, when we calculate in the budget office what the increase, when you average one student increase, we calculate what that will be for each individual school. That then goes to the instructional directors, and they have latitude to move that so that equates evenly between a school, because it's hard to cut a .2 person or a .4 person. So they normally then round that up to a half a person or a full position, so that it may affect different schools a little bit differently than what the worksheet is, but in total is what they normally work with.
Well, maybe you could start then by looking at these numbers, and I know you do this every year anyway, so in terms of what kind of choices they force you to make in terms of staffing for your particular building.
I'll certainly talk, the numbers that are listed here for me, for instance, if we move to the 24.8 formula, it says a reduction of .8, which I would assume from my directors would be a full position. For me, I'm basically going to look at where each of the grade levels currently are. There are obviously some no-go grade levels for us, where the numbers are already at a level that we wouldn't consider increasing them. And then there's usually, if we're fortunate as principals, there's a grade level where we feel like we have some flexibility, and we might be able to go, for instance, from five to four. And that's certainly five to four classrooms.
Classes.
That's certainly easier than going from four to three, or three to two, because it's just less impact. So, in my building, a 1.0 would probably, based on the numbers that I have this year, mean that we would reduce at a particular grade level. So that would be the direct impact on me. If we moved over a column and we went to the 1.2, if that was given to me again as a 1.0, same impact, if it was given to me as a 1.5, which is also the impact that would be for the next column over, that would mean I would certainly reduce at a grade level. And then one of my current positions is a special education position that is comprised of a half allocation from special education and a half allocation from my classroom allotment. So I put those two together to make a full-time special education position. If that had to go to half, then obviously, for instance, at my school, we've had a really big emphasis on co-teaching, really getting kids to stay in the general education classroom as much as possible. And that means sending in a special educator. So if that goes from one to a half, then that would be an impact on me, where I wouldn't have the flexibility of schedule that I had had for the last couple of years. That would also mean probably a personnel shift, because the person who is currently holding that 1.0 position, I would assume go find another 1.0 position somewhere in the system, and then I would be in the position of trying to hire a .5 position. So those would be the impacts based on the numbers that I see here.
Okay, and in terms of your special at halftime position, well, when it would become a halftime position, can you talk a little bit about what that would look like in a classroom?
Yeah, the person that's currently holding that position who would likely move on, I would hire a halftime position, and what I would have to look at is across the instructional schedule. So where's my greatest need? Where do I have students who need services that are delivered in the classroom? And so I would probably have to decide first, is that going to be a morning halftime position, or is that going to be an afternoon? So I'd have to vector that as far as where it was needed the most. But it also might mean that there's simply not enough time to do co-teaching in as many of the areas that we would like to, and in that case, I might have to do what we call collapse to some pullout. So, because, just the way the schedules would work, you know, we would try to limit that impact as much as possible, but obviously, if you reduce your special education allocation by half, it's going to impact delivering those services.
And when you're pulling kids out of the classroom as opposed to keeping them there, they're missing some instruction, are they?
That's true, yeah. I mean, I would say that our teachers are pretty good at timing that. So for instance, if we know a student has to come out for a half hour of some type of reading program, we can certainly service that in the co-taught model, but we may pull that student in there, maybe working at their independent time. Again, that starts to become a scheduling challenge, but we're pretty good at that. So again, there'd be an impact, and we'd have to figure out a plan to target those kids. It wouldn't be ideal, but, you know, I have a great staff, we'd probably figure out a way to try to pull that off.
Okay. Did you want to speak a little about Ballinger?
I'm at Valley Elementary.
I'm sorry, Valley.
And we are a smaller school of about 410 students, and quite different from a larger school, I think the impact is greater on us because we don't have the number of grades in classrooms in each grade to absorb classrooms that might be split up. So for example, in the first scenario, I would probably lose .5, which for me, with only three teachers in each grade level, I would go to an intervention position, probably taking a look at, taking a hit on the .5 intervention, which would probably create a little bit of a backslide on services, probably the neediest students who that person obviously, you know, provides services to. If I went to the next level, I would be losing a 1.0 position, which would probably more than likely be a classroom teacher. And looking again at my numbers, with only three teachers in each grade level, I'm going from, could be 22 to 23 students in a classroom, to as many as, for kindergarten, first and second grade would be 29 to 30 students in a classroom, and for my upper grades, much greater, with my current numbers would be about 35 to 38 students in a classroom. So I'd be looking to do possibly a split, or again, absorb an intervention position and make something work in the classroom to try to preserve those numbers, but certainly I'd be looking at a grade increase in the number of students. When you go from three teachers to two, there's just not enough to spread the numbers across.
And when you say an intervention teacher, what would that person be doing?
Currently, you know, if I was looking at a .5 reading intervention, or a .5 math intervention position, if I was to lose a .5, I would probably look at that first, just simply to preserve the numbers for my grade level homeroom classroom teachers.
But I'm saying, if you're saying you would use an intervention teacher if you were to have to lose a-
I would certainly have to look very differently at my intervention services, if I lost a full-time teacher, to see if I could provide more support in those classrooms, especially that are an increase in size, to maybe readjust the students that she's working with to provide more support, particularly for that classroom or classrooms in that grade, which would greatly prob, it would greatly, you know, adjust the schedule for our interventions and the services they're providing for all the other students in the building.
Right, all right.
And I think that's similar to what you heard last night in the public hearing, when the one student was talking about the enrichment specialist at Middletown Elementary School. Our principals often will carve out those support positions from the staffing they've received, and so when staffing is cut, those positions are going to be more vulnerable than your regular classroom positions, and that's particularly challenging for a smaller school such as Jason. I'm going to put you guys on the spot.
Okay.
Because last night, the board also heard a lot of comments about staff morale, workload issues there, and you know that the board is struggling with. We have a request that's above maintenance of effort, and it includes a salary and staffing resource pool, and if we don't get that, where would we find, hence the conversation about class size.
Sure, absolutely.
So, did the board want to ask these gentlemen anything about the day and the life in an elementary school with what teachers are grappling with right now?
Well, I want to make clear to you that that's, you know, we're not on the ground the way you are, and real stories are really what allows us to get a more accurate picture of, we do a lot of things on the policy level, but that affects you in a very real way on a day-to-day basis, so I would take this opportunity to paint us a picture of what that looks like every day.
Wow, yeah.
I thought you were going to put you on the spot.
Yeah, no, I mean, this is something that we as leaders in our building think about all the time. We understand that there are times when resources are not as plentiful. I mean, ideally, if you were going to ask me, I could definitely tell you what I would like, but there are realities associated with the economy, and depending on, you know, what the total dollar amount is at the end of the day, I understand that you guys have to make some hard decisions. I think Dr. Albin's point about teacher morale is, you know, I think we hear that mentioned, this is my 22nd year in the business, and I've heard it mentioned all through my career. I've probably never felt it the way we have now in those 22 years, whether when I was a teacher, or as an assistant principal, or a principal. You know, I have a lot of conversations with my staff, and, well, I'm going to give you a straight answer, there are a lot of people that are starting to consider other counties, and I don't, and these are some of my strongest folks that come in and have these kind of conversations with me. So I guess that's my biggest concern, is ultimately, if we can't remain competitive, I'm concerned that we'll have a little bit of an exodus. And so, for me, I try to do a lot of things in our building to build that morale, and part of that is, is if we're effective with kids, which we are, I think, at my school, that helps a lot, but it only goes so far. So I think those are some serious considerations as far as how our teaching force feels. That's my two cents in that respect.
Thank you. I appreciate your candor.
I think at Valley, where I am, there's pluses and minuses to be a smaller building, but I think one of the pluses is the close relationships you build with your staff. And Valley has a very strong staff, they've been together through a lot, and they pull together, so, again, maybe not quite as many years as Dr. Cuppitt, but 17 years in the system, seeing its ups and downs, I would say this is one of our more challenging periods that we're going through. I try to keep a close pulse in the building on how teachers and students are feeling, and I certainly believe that we are under some pretty major shifts in education, in curriculum, in assessment. And our teachers are holding strong, but they're looking for some support. And it's very difficult as an administrator who sees that in my building, knowing that sometimes I've tapped out all the support that I can, and I'm still trying to take some things off of their plate for them, because ultimately, it also helps being married to a teacher, I'm reminded every day what that's like. And I certainly want to try to make their jobs easier, because they shouldn't be stressed out with the daily, I guess, grind that goes along with all this change, everything that's been thrown at them, their focus should be on their students. And so I try to do that for them as much as possible, but it's getting more challenging.
Thank you. I've been asking a lot of questions, Dr. Ben Calley?
So, it's a credit to our teachers that they will do everything for the kids, and credit to both of you and your colleagues that you're going to make adjustments, but that's the thing, adjustments are just adjustments. Suppose you were to explain to a parent, I mean, this is all technical aspect, how the education would degrade, you're implementing new curriculum, you are, we are introducing electronic media-
Right.
And then increase class sizes on top of that, and reduce number of options. So if you were to explain to a parent, how would you explain this instead of being technical?
I think that's a great question, I think that's an, anytime you start talking about increases in class size, you know, parents will start to have some anxiety about that. The relationship that I have with my community, I would be very open and frank about explaining what we're going to do as our plan, and I think even though it might feel like a change to some of the folks in our community, if they feel that you have a quality plan to kind of mitigate the impact that a class size increase would have, I think you can usually get them comfortable with the idea. That's the genius and promise of having outstanding teachers in classrooms. So if a parent realizes that, you know, class sizes are going to be bigger than what we've been used to as my kid has come up through the school, but I know that Mrs. Dwyer's going to mitigate that impact by, you know, focusing very closely on what my kids can and can't do, and we have a plan for supporting them, then I think that's a conversation we can have with parents. It really depends on what the numbers end up being, and what the situation would be. My approach has always been, if we're going to increase the class size anywhere, if I have to make a decision on a grade level, we're going to do it at fourth and fifth, long before we do it at the earlier grades. So, and I think most of my colleagues probably take that same approach. You know, that's when we can say to families that, you know, if the class sizes increase a little bit in fifth grade, that's all right, they're just going to be that much more ready for middle school, where, you know, they'll need to be more independent in that environment. So those are the kind of conversations that we would have, and like I said, it would really depend on each of those school communities, and the principals would have to, you know, gauge that conversation for themselves.
So, but the argument could have a problem, because somebody would say, if you could mitigate the effect by 25 students, then we should have 25 students. Whereas I look at it, is that you may make adjustments, but they're not ideal, that our school system being number one may start slipping back.
Well, I think that's, I mean, like you said, I could definitely tell you what I would like in my building as far as resources. Ideally, I would love to get class sizes to be even smaller, and I'd love to have a math specialist, and I'd love to have an enrichment person. I mean, there's a lot of things in the vision for what schools are going to need to look like, and I don't know if I'm off of the conversation here, but there are certainly things as a principal that I would like to do. What I also wouldn't like to do is lose three or four of my best teachers. So I think that's part of the balance that's in this equation for you all as a board, and I don't envy your position in the decisions that you'll have to make.
So we should be honest with our parents and tell them the real impact rather than adjustments, because adjustments are just that. Every moment you use the word adjustment, it's not ideal. It's something you're just fitting in to make do.
I think that's a fair statement.
And I think too, just the conversations I would have with my parents, if, for example, if I had to look at going from three classrooms to two in a certain grade, and the impact and numbers that would have, I certainly would want to communicate with those parents well beforehand, of planning with my classroom teachers and the building level support, intervention as support staff, and how we're going to have to kind of come together and rethink our program to help support those specific students in that grade. So I would definitely want to have a clear plan to the parents to let them know that while, yes, this may not be ideal, we certainly do have a plan in place in our building to try to make the most of it, and still provide them with the best service we possibly can. Behind the scenes, they may not know though, how we may have to be slowly pulling from some other grades that those people would have been servicing to help in that particular grade. So there's a domino effect. But certainly being open with the parents, letting them know that you do have a plan, that you will support the students, and that's what we do.
Mrs. Smith?
Dr. Cuppitt, you said Mrs. Dwyer, I don't know if that's a real person or not.
It is a real person.
Okay, you said she would handle this, and she would take care of it, and she could, but what would that do to her?
Well, certainly the larger class sizes requires a little bit different approach to work. You know, a fifth grade classroom with, and we've had numbers that were, you know, close to 30, if not over, before, is very different than running a classroom with 23. I mean, just physically in the classroom itself, that's a lot more of student bodies in the classroom, so there are some logistics things that a teacher would have to consider. I don't think it'd be a surprise to anybody to say the amount of one-to-one attention would decrease. So those are things that would have to be considered. In my experience, is teachers have adapted very well to having a little bit larger class size. I mean, we always have grade levels that bubble up through, where we know the numbers are a little bit bigger in that grade level, and when they get to fourth and fifth, we're often collapsing, you know, say from five to four, which is what's in the plan I've shared with my staff to this point, based on the current formulas, that we'll go from five classes to four when this group moves to fourth grade. So I think they're expecting that, I think our intermediate teachers are more accustomed to having the larger class size. You know, 31 fifth graders can be a challenge, but 31 kindergartners would be quite a different story. So, so I think Mrs. Dwyer and the Mrs. Dwyers that are all over Frederick County Public Schools would work with their teams to come up with a plan to try to respond to that.
But is that one of the things that might force one of your teachers or more to leave?
Well-
Because you said that we may be losing, and that's one of my big fears-
Sure, sure.
-all through the whole system, top to bottom.
I think each person has to weigh those things for themselves, so speaking very generally about teachers, an increase in class size would be one thing, but it depends on what you get for it. So for instance, Dr. Albin had indicated that, at some schools, they took their staffing formula, and they decided as a school, you know, we really either A, need additional intervention support to help our needy kids, or B, we'd like to have an enrichment person. And those are typically the uses that have, I've seen used historically here in Frederick County. Well, there are staffs that will agree to that, especially the grade level that knows that they're going to have an increase in class size, because they see the bigger picture of having an enrichment position or an intervention, and how that would help kids. So I don't think teachers are automatically against a class size increase per se, it depends on what you're going to get for it. So in this decision that you all are, sound like you're weighing about, what are we able to do, if this is the vision for the system, there's a lot of things that we need to do to get there, there's only so much money. So what are the steps that we're going to take? Are we going to try to maintain a, the quality workforce that we have in our classrooms? And do you as a board feel that that is tied to things like compensation, and compensation's tied to morale? Whatever your thinking is, I understand that. When I go back to that teacher, they're going to make a decision, what do we get out of this, so to speak? And I don't mean that in a way to sound selfish, because our teachers are not that way, but what are the other services that we can get for students across the system if in fact we increase class size? I think that's what will probably go through teachers' minds.
And that is the rock and the hard place that we're in right now.
Correct.
I know my son was in a portable in kindergarten with 28 kids, and I remember, because I was always in that class.
Mm-hmm.
Did you have a, Mr. Yonkel? Don't come back to you.
Shift the focus for a minute, obviously, I think we've had conversations and understand the impacts of class size. Last night, we also heard a lot of comments about resources for our staff, teachers within buildings, not having paper, having copiers broken. Can you address, from your all-school standpoint, the status of whether or not teachers are getting adequate supplies, whether they have adequate copiers and other mechanical computers, everything that they need within the school buildings?
Um-
And how that affects their jobs?
Yeah, I think you ask teachers and administrators if they think they have adequate supplies, and the answer's always going to be no, no matter what you provide for them, because I think they're always looking to use whatever, and, you know, whatever resources are at their disposal, they want to provide for students. Certainly, we work within our budgets in our school, and I provide them with what I think is adequate for them to do their job.
Right.
Certainly, you know, we're trying to move toward reduction in use of paper, as, you know, as technologies are improving, that's certainly what we're encouraging. I would think that teachers have gotten pretty savvy with using their own resources when things are in a shortfall, but certainly, you know, bringing up the word copiers and paper for a school building is always going to create lots of, lots of smirks and oohs and things like that. But we make do with what we have, and I think as building level administrators, we just have to constantly monitor that to make sure that they do have enough to do their job.
Both of you have been here for a long time, so if you look at today compared to three years ago or five years ago, is it better, worse, the same, as far as the amount of resources that teachers have to use?
I think that's a great question. I think one of the things you need to think about is the context of instructional change that we're under right now. I guess, I have been here in this, here in this system for 17 years, five years in another system before that, I've never seen this much change at one point. So what that means resource-wise, I'll give you a very clear example from a discussion I had with my staff yesterday. We had a webcast on performance-based learning, and one of the teams in my school have been early adopters, they started last year, and they've been implementing performance-based learning, which is outstanding for students. Keeping that in mind is the goal. And they used a book, a resource about performance-based learning, it's a great resource. And so we had this webcast yesterday, and so now I have some other teachers that want to step forward and, you know, engage with this performance, project-based learning. First question I got was, can we get a copy of that book? And I immediately kind of had to hesitate that, well, let me think about the budget for a sec. Well, I could probably pull off one per grade level, so that comes into play. The issue is now, it's not just, we're not just doing project-based learning, we're doing project-based learning, we have Common Core for math, we have Common Core for language arts, we have the writing components with the Calkins materials, and we get some of those materials systemically, but teachers are very good at finding things that are out there that would help them in their classrooms, and we always kind of have to balance. You know, the veterans will come and ask for everything, because they know, if I ask for nine things, I might get four. So there's that constant discussion that we have with our staff about those resources. So would I love to have a 5% or a 10% increase in my school-based budget? Sure. Like I said, I'll tell you what I think I need.
Right, and isn't it also that each school does it a little bit differently too?
Absolutely, absolutely.
So one school, they may provide more-
Right. Like, in my base budget, I allocate money for professional learning time for my teachers, which is the single most, in my opinion, single most valuable resource we have for them, is time to look at curriculum instruction and assessment, as Mr. Bowser was talking about earlier. These are the fundamental questions of shifting with the Common Core. If teachers do not have time to do that, it makes it much more difficult. So that's something I allocate out of my budget. Could I not do that and then use that money on paper? Sure, I could do that, but our staff has come to the agreement that that time learning together is very important, and so we prioritize that.
Thank you.
Dr. Miller?
Well, first, at Valley, what, do you actually have the physical building space? I mean, that's what it would look like. I've seen a lot of kids in kindergarten, first grade classes especially, do you have the physical ability to put 35, 38 kids in a class?
That's a very good question. We are an older school that was built in the 60s and had a little renovation, not too long after that, I believe in the early 70s. Half of the school is the open-style school, and half the school has, you know, classroom doors that will shut, but they all have walkways in between. They are fairly small in size. I have been a classroom teacher in this county of having 29 to 30 students in a classroom, so I know what that's like, and it would be pretty tight quarters. We have students right now, or classrooms right now, with 25 students in a classroom, and it's pretty tight to maneuver and find room to, you know, spread out and have students move and work in small collaborative groups, which is really what we're leaning toward, is, you know, getting up, students up and moving, and talking and learning, and asking questions. So it certainly would be tight quarters.
Okay. And then, the challenges program?
Mm-hmm.
How will that be impacted, and what, do you know your numbers as far as the number of kids? Has it been increasing, decreasing, how many kids that are getting services?
Yeah, we did see higher numbers in our challenges program early in the year. Now, that staffing is separate and apart from this. So Dan Martz and his folks were responsive to that at the beginning of the year. We had a few students arrive from out of state, and those are the ones that you just don't know about.
Right.
They show up, and so we were able to work with the central office folks on that- We, we had, we had a few students arrive from out of state, and those are the ones that you just don't know about.
Right.
They show up. And so we were able to, to work with the central office folks on that. So I, I see that as kind of separate and apart from, from these numbers that we're talking about today.
Well, it's separate and apart, but anytime we put programs into schools...
Sure.
And we don't have the, the staffing ratio that gives you the support to adjust for that, you know, that, that's what we want to know about it, because I know teachers do take some of their positions and try to, to, to fill in. I mean, principals take those. So it, it does impact. It, it definitely impacts when you have a high needs population...
Sure.
...at the school. So, and that one is definitely increasing, and that's one where you are looking to innovate with what's going on and keep up.
Any other questions? Thank you very much. We're going to...
Thank you.
Move on to our middle school folks. Some say in the middle.
Good morning. Brian Vasquenza, the principal of Monocacy Middle School.
And Jennifer Bingman, principal at Newmarket Middle School.
I would echo much of what my colleagues had to say before us. Certainly, if you have specific questions to middle schools, I think Ms. Bingman and I can give us our best shot, give you your best shot of answering questions.
Dr. Bengali?
So, preparing for this board, I taught in middle school, substituted art for a long time. I found that's the most critical period in a child's academic career, they get ready for high school. There are also a lot of special problems in middle school. So the, if you want to examine, you cannot examine in the same context as elementary school. It's a very different kind of problems you all handle. So how would these reduction in teachers specifically impact middle school particularly?
Well, I can give you a very specific, for instance, from Monocacy Middle School. Roughly, we have two-hundred-and-fifty students per grade level. And right now, we have two content area teachers at each grade level. So we have ten sections taught at each grade level, which would equate to about twenty-five students per class. So if we have a reduction of one teacher, and we look at that grade level, and you look at one of those content areas, you're essentially doubling the amount of students in that class. Certainly, a content area grade level teacher would be, I think, one of our last areas to look at, but if the reality was such, we wouldn't have to make that difficult decision. Another thing, Dr. Bengali, that you had mentioned was the uniqueness of a middle school. And I think one, one thing that's oftentimes missed in this conversation is the need for resources outside the classroom. For instance, our guidance counselors, school support teachers, that are so critical, I think, in the, the academic and social-emotional development of middle school-age students. And I know last year, Dr. Lockard and I were on a staffing committee, and we made a recommendation to the board about increasing the amount of those types of supports and services for students as well. And we can't even begin, I think, to look at that if we're talking about reducing our teaching staff. And that's disappointing.
And with this forty-five-minute or forty-eight, seventy-minute period with larger class, adjusting gets a little more difficult?
Absolutely. I mean, you, you talk about teachers' one-on-one work with students, that would be diminished. Talk about the turnaround time for grading assignments. If you have twenty-five students in a class and that increases to thirty-five, it's going to take longer to turn around assignments. And that's truly where a lot of the learning occurs, is when teachers provide descriptive feedback for students on their assignments, and it's, it's taking longer to get that process done. The other thing that, that we've done a lot at Monocacy this year is making sure we reach out to our parent community. And when you increase class sizes and you have more parents to reach out to, that delay in communication is going to occur, and that, that doesn't benefit anybody.
So in the past, I've expressed concern with this new timetable about science, teaching science, especially the lab work in science. And I've heard from teachers that it is difficult. Now, if you increase the class size and to do science experiments, it becomes almost impossible. At least, you have better experience, you can explain that there.
Well, again, it, it comes down to the fact of having thirty-five students in a class instead of twenty-five students in a class, and how you group students together to complete a lab, how much time the teacher's able to spend with each student or each group of students in order to make sure to, to monitor their progress, to check their understanding, it's going to become more limited. Absolutely. One of the most valuable resources we have is, is that time. And that time-per-student ratio is going to decrease significantly if you have more students in your classroom.
And in science experiments, there's an issue of safety also.
Well, absolutely. There's a whole safety issue, and, and, you know, if, if we start looking at reducing staff and you look towards physical education, for instance, right now at Monocacy Middle School, we have what I would call, you know, fairly large PE classes of thirty-five. If we reduce the PE teacher position, you're talking about PE classes in excess of forty-five kids. That, that becomes a true safety issue. Or tech classes with a significant number of students in it, and you have bandsaws and, and table saws, that becomes, it becomes a safety issue as well. Not only in just the teacher's ability to monitor students, but also just the space in the classroom itself becomes problematic.
And in a small school, it's very different with regard to how it impacts. And it actually impacts all students, because it goes from interventions to how, to our special ed population. And so what happens, I'm already decreased a point five based on enrollment. And so currently, I'm, I'm going to have to access, and so I'm looking at exactly where am I going to take a point five already. And it impacts the foreign language, which middle school, as you're talking about, is one of our times where we really work to get kids involved and to help them to be able to explore what's coming in their future. And we want to have those choices available to them so that they can actually have the exposure to get to all the different types of, of academic classes and elective classes that we can offer them. So you come down with a decision as to which elective do we need to cut when you're talking about cutting staff. So right now, I'm, I'm losing a point five based on enrollment, and so if you increase it by one, I'll actually lose two more staff members. It's one point nine, which would round up to be two. And so at that point, we look at foreign language, which is something that not all students can take, just based on interventions and other things. And so we lose that avail- availability for kids to have the world language exposure that middle school could be really helping them to get a head start on that. In addition, interventions is critical for students, but when you're talking about increasing and cutting class sizes so that we would possibly increase up to forty, you look at the interventions and say, how can we do it a little differently? Which, when we have great programs and we don't have the time or the resources and staff to, to put towards that, then we're not going to help the students reach success. In addition, for a small school with how, right now, we have our how classes are designed specifically so that all honors students are in those classes. If I were have to cut an additional two staff members, it would be very difficult for a small school to be able to have those clusters in a, in a strictly an honors class. And so we would have to have students being mixed in there that possibly are not honors. And so it would, it would be a struggle to uphold the how cluster model, which has been successful, and, and a lot of parents have very much appreciated the change in the how cluster model at the middle level. In addition, we, being a small school, we only have two and a half special ed teachers. And so it becomes very difficult for our special ed teachers for two and a half of them to cover three grades. And so the two that I have work tremendous. I can't even give them enough accolades to the tons of time, support, and energy that they put into co-teaching, but they can't do it when you have two and a half already. And so I become very concerned about losing two more staff members and the, the ability of my special educators to be able to meet the needs of the students within the classroom with larger class sizes. In addition, Newmarket also has the pyramid program, which houses the students throughout the county who have emotional disabilities, where it struggles to be successful in a comprehensive middle school. One of the benefits of the program being at a comprehensive middle school is that the students are able to mainstream out into the classes so that we can do it in a slow progression to help the student to gain the ability to go back to their home school. If we increase class size, it would be very difficult for a, a student who's coming from a very small pyramid program to the mainstream in order to help them to regain that ability to handle their emotions in the, in the comprehensive class. So at, at Newmarket, it's, it's a huge impact, and it's very much concerning, as well as at other schools. But those are a variety of the areas that would be impacted that I see.
My last question.
Mm-hmm.
So I think it's, it's a very green picture. What my concern additionally is achievement gap. We are trying to reduce achievement gap. To me, a, a school is measured by how small the achievement gap is. That's my measure, not the top-scoring students. And from what I hear is that for the achievement gap could increase because of these, because you can't provide the facilities that students need.
We have a, several groups of very vulnerable students at all of our schools. At Monocacy, we have a significant number of students who come to us from poverty. We have an ever-increasing number of students who are in our ESOL program. These are vulnerable groups of students that we went, if we were faced with class size increases, I have concerns about. Another thing is, we talked earlier about teacher morale. Certainly, compensation is one piece of that. Another piece of that is student achievement. They take a lot of reward in seeing their students achieve. With increased class sizes, student achievement is going to be challenging. It's going to be challenging to meet the needs of every kid in your classroom. Not that every teacher out there won't give it their best shot and do everything they can to possibly make it happen, but as Dr. Cupid already said, you know, they're facing so many challenges and changes as it is right now to increase their class size, you just have to start to wonder when, when is it going to be the straw that breaks the camel's back? Every afternoon, I do bus duty and say goodbye to our kids and say goodbye to our teachers and just pray that night that they come back the next morning, because what they're doing today is a very challenging job. And if we start talking about adding more students to their class, not that they wouldn't accept them with open arms, but we're just adding one more layer of challenge to what's already a difficult job.
And part of student, student success is the relationship that the, the teachers have with students. And so what we want them to create is that intimate relationship to help them to see their, their struggles, their strengths, and to help them fill those gaps so that students are able to reach the success. And so certainly, when they have more, more students to try to build that, it becomes more difficult. And currently, most of our middle school teachers have about a hundred-and-twenty-five students on a daily basis. And so when you increase that by possibly five to ten, depending on how the, who's cut and how it's cut, it, it really becomes more challenging. And I think for what you're speaking to, Dr. Bengali, it is very difficult for them to be able to, to, to really find out what it is that the student needs and to provide them with exactly what they need to help them to reach the success. And I apologize for saying your name wrong. I apologize.
We didn't notice.
Thank you.
I did, so I apologize.
Dr. Miller has a question.
Again, kind of the same question as, well, one thing, middle school has, everyone's been going through changes, a lot of changes, but middle school in particular, over the past year, two years, have gone tremendous amount of changes. So when we did the forty-seven-minute day, like you were saying, the PE classes and things like that, so what would that do like at, at Newmarket as, if, in your science classes? Do you actually have, again, the physical space in the building to have that many kids in one section?
It would be difficult, especially when, when they're doing the labs. We want the groups to be able to spread out throughout the classroom and to be able to really work effectively as a team. And when they're crowded, it is very difficult for the teachers to be able to make that happen. So yes, absolutely, facility-wise, it is a concern.
Okay, all right. And then how, when, when teachers have already made adjustments in this year, as far as how they teach, things like that, what impact do you see as far as the, the, the integration between the teachers, working together across content areas, things like that? What impact do you see as far as when we try to strengthen, like you said, with the how program and things like that, the things that we are doing to try to strengthen those years, which have been a concern for many, many years for this board? What do you see the impact of that?
I, I see it becoming more of a challenge, just based on, right now, we want teachers' part of it as well as students getting feedback, and we want it to be meaningful feedback. And so teachers trying to, you know, grade the papers, to get the papers completed, get it into Pinnacle, get it back to the student in a timely manner, so that the student has the opportunity for growth becomes more of a concern. And so when a teacher's faced with a decision of whether to grade this stack of papers or go meet and collaborate and, and, you know, really kind of move one another forward, it's hard to not look at that stack of papers and feel overwhelmed if you choose to go and do the collaboration to create those engaging lessons that are really going to help the students to be more successful.
I'm gonna, I, I said that earlier. I'm gonna agree that, you know, with the physical space, we have it, but it will become very, very tight. And just in terms of, you know, the, the feedback to our students and, and communication with our parents, when, when you have more customers to serve, sometimes that service is going to be a little bit slower. The turnaround time's going to be a little bit slower. It's an uncomfortable conversation to have, but I understand that's where we are. But increasing class size might be one of the biggest challenges that our teachers have faced, despite, you know, the change to the Common Core, changes to our assessment, changes to the middle school schedule. Increasing class size, and I'm, I'm going to speak on behalf of some of our middle school teachers, may be the biggest change that they would have to face, the biggest challenge.
And like the elementary counterparts spoke about staff morale, and I think one of the biggest things that impacts staff morale is when they're looking around saying, who's leaving? And so there's no doubt that this spring will be very difficult if every school was faced with a decision of, of accessing teachers. It will very much impact the, the staff morale, because it's hard for them to look at their colleagues and say, who's going to have to leave now? And it, it just becomes a more difficult ending of the year.
All right, thank you. Any other questions? Thank you very much for your time.
And I want to say, I appreciate you guys having the difficult conversations. And, you know, part of my interest in, in bringing this forward now is because I don't want to be in the spring and just talking about this and just making the decisions. So that's why, that we wanted to have the difficult conversations.
Absolutely.
So I appreciate you guys being...
Better to have it now than in May.
Absolutely.
That's, that's, that's how I feel about it. So thank you guys for coming.
Thank you.
If we could have our high school administrators come up, and I want to welcome Mrs. Cusimano and thank her for, I know you were serving on the internal audit committee this morning for being late this morning. Thank you for doing that and rushing over.
Good morning. I'm Nancy Dahl, and I'm principal at Brunswick High School.
Good morning, folks. I'm Jay Burnell, and I'm at Urbana High School. Would you like to speak first?
Um, you could speak first.
Folks, when we receive our staffing allocations at the high school level, it's a number like seventy-three point five. Now, the first thing we do is multiply that number times six, because that gives us the number of sections that we have to work with. So when you do that at Urbana High School, we've got four-hundred-and-forty-one sections to work with. Now, we've got some challenges, because out of that number, we've got a computer coordinator that we have to give sections to, because that comes out of that allotment. And I'm going to be honest with you, thank goodness some of our computers aren't working at Urbana High School. That lady'd be really busy, I'd have to give her more periods. Okay? Second thing is, we have an athletic director that has to teach three periods, and I'm president of the MVAL. We're the only county in this league, okay, that makes our athletic directors teach classes with the load they have, and in the state, by the way. The international baccalaureate program is at our school. That comes out of that. Six sections come out right up, right off the top out of that program at Urbana High School. It's unique to Urbana High School, but it was, it was there for a purpose when it began, okay? So how do we, how do we, how do we deal with this? Okay? Well, the answer is, we take one of our assistant principals and say, you're no longer an assistant principal, you're a one-point-four teacher, which they did that to principals before I ever got there. And we've maintained it ever since. Okay? So it's called a trade-in. You trade in an administrator for teachers. Okay? We have a lit specialist and a HSA specialist at the high school level, as do all the high schools. We have them teaching classes, because we need to, you know, keep the programs that are so vital to us there. Now, when I got my numbers this year, I said, oh, thank goodness, because, you know, the projection that they give out in December was on the upswing. You know, and it's like, okay, you're going to increase by ninety students. So, you know, according to Larkin, that's, oh, Jay, you should be getting about three teachers, probably a little more, but we got to hold back some others for some other reasons, and you've been in the system long enough to understand that. So that's the formula. Now, if, okay, the board makes a decision to increase class size by one student, okay, you'll lose two of those teachers. And what that means to us is twelve current course offerings will come off the board, okay? I got my raw numbers right before we had the snowstorm, and I looked at it, and it's, I got my raw numbers right before we had the snowstorm, and I looked at it, and it's, okay, we can make this work now. With the increase in three, we can make this work. You know, we can maintain our visual and our performing arts, you know, we won't lose too much world language. And we've got the other factor, which is the financial literacy element that everybody's been, you know, like, putting off for two years, that we can't put off anymore. So that's going to be a big issue at the high school level. Everybody's going to need to have that requirement filled. And so, you know, those people that teach those business courses and that finance or that SAT prep that matches with it are going to, you know, be very valuable commodities. That being said, okay, how would it impact Urbana? Well, I looked at those numbers. You cannot access, you know, like, one period out of this teacher's schedule and two or that. It's either five or, or .5, which means three periods, or a full position, which means six. So that's how you have to do it at the high school level in order to, you know, maintain people's jobs and have them shared with other schools. Okay? So I looked at all my options. Okay, where are the little pockets? And it's, okay, a .5 here, a .5 here, a .5 here, and a .5 here. There's no one area that I can take one particular person out of. So at Urbana High School, it would impact science, it would impact performing arts, it would impact visual arts, and it would impact the growth that I'm, already need for career tech education. Okay? Now, the specific courses there, that's a point where we would have to go back and have serious discussions with the leaders of the school and the department chairs, et cetera, about, okay, what do you want? You want algebra-based physics or you want AP Physics 2? Pick one. Well, they're gonna, one's gonna go, and it's all, it's all just based on enrollment. Now, the, the problem we really have is not building size yet. I mean, they're building out there in Urbana, so it's coming, but we aren't there yet. I remember when I was principal at, at Middletown High School, and we had the same quagmire going about, well, what if? What if? And I said, I can't fit another desk in that room. There's just not physical space to do it. You know, and I was at Tuscarora, and we finally got senior class in there, that first year of seniors, I had 12 portable classrooms. Three's homes had put an addition on the school in order to even make it work. Okay? So I don't know the, the particulars of those schools. I do know that in order for us to, you know, maintain the IB program and other things that are, are the signature of, of our school and our community, it's, it's really important. And I want to tell you, it's, you know, the IB program is just not Urbana residents, you know? About 60% of the people in that program are out of district. And so that's, you know, you want to talk about a ripple effect, you know, out there in the community, if, if things aren't, you know, like, supported, that, that's going to be huge.
Thank you.
And this lady could probably talk at length about that because she was at Urbana when the program was initiated.
Yes. But I'm going to talk about Brunswick High School. We are slated for 698 students. We are growing. The community is growing, so we're excited about that, but we're not there now. And with an increase in class size, we are also looking at losing two teachers, which is 12 sections, as Jay said, you know, it does affect us. And it is difficult to look across and say, where can I do a .5? Because we'd rather do a, a .2, a .2, and a .2. It's just not possible to do that. We feel that we're already at a skeletal staff. I have one person in my music program. I have one person in my family and consumer science. I have numerous teachers that teach multiple levels within the same class. In other words, I have Latin 3 and 4 in the same classroom. I have acting, I have one class of acting, and it's 1 through 4, one class of technical theater, 1 through 4. So teachers are teaching multiple levels in classrooms already. By reducing this, it, it also is going to, or increasing class size, it is also going to affect AP offerings and our intervention classes. Right now, we alternate offering AP Chemistry and AP Physics because we don't have the personnel, the staffing, to offer both at the same time. And if you're not in that cycle and you want to take AP Chemistry, but that's the year AP Physics is offered and you're a senior, you lose out. So kids have to make some very, very difficult choices. With the introduction of Common Core, we have really experienced a bottleneck in our math classes. And the year-long classes, that takes up extra staffing when you have those kids in year-long classes. And we tried to keep those classes small, but they're at 26 to 29 students. And I do, I, I did increase the number of co-teacher, co-teaching positions that I have or, you know, slots. I, I asked them to take on some more classes this year so that we could meet the needs of those kids in the intervention classes. We do not have the opportunity to offer the electives. When I look through this high school course offerings, we're not able to offer that many electives. Last year, I, when I went to Brunswick High School, there was not a single business person, teacher in the building. So, like, we got to get this program up and running. So I cut a .5 art position for a .5 business, just to get the program started. I would like that program to grow. When we talk STEM, and I look at what I offer for CTE or in any of those STEM-related classes, we're really behind the eight ball in that particular area. With the oncoming of PARC assessments and that change, and my HSA intervention teacher, who also teaches classes, and my literacy specialist, whom I rarely see until 4 o'clock because she's so tied up with all the testing and, and getting kids where they need to be, it's really taxing for her. Really, if, you know, if I had to replace her, I don't know how I would do that. And I am looking at that in the near future, as she's planning on retiring. It is difficult for us to look at our students and, and make sure that we have, that we are offering the completer programs that they need for CTE. And if you want specific examples, I will share that not only do we have, you know, the small school, we have a small community, and when our students want to be work-study completers, the community really can't support the workforce that we would like to put out there and to give those experiences. So sometimes we're creative in-house and with our neighboring schools to give those kids the opportunity, and sometimes their work-study means that it's volunteer work, that they're not getting paid. So that's a really difficult challenge that we face. We are offering the financial literacy this semester. Once again, anytime we have those add-on in courses and we don't get increased staffing, it puts an additional burden somewhere else. Also, in a small, small school, when you're developing the master schedule, a lot of times you have just single offerings of a particular course. Well, that's going to cause a shift in maybe a group of students. For example, there might be a, a Spanish course that, let's say, Spanish 2 as an example, that I'm offering second semester kids took Spanish 1 first semester, and it's offered in the morning, but also in the morning and afternoon, I have a nine honors class. Well, any of those kids that are in that Spanish 1 are going to be forced into the afternoon English. So therefore, I have an afternoon class of 37 and a morning class of 21. If you're, you know, it doesn't work out, like, to balance classes because there are so many other factors in there. And our classrooms are small. There are times when I can't even walk around the classroom because they are so tight So I just want to emphasize, it's difficult to support those students that need the intervention, especially those students that may not fall under special ed but are still struggling in the classroom. We are very fortunate that we offer the Bell afternoon tutoring for, as part of our tutoring and intervention, we have National Honor Society students there and teachers there as part of our PLC that we have. We have over 65 students, an average of 65 students, every Wednesday and, Tuesday and Wednesday, attending those programs. But we don't want our, our kids out at Brunswick High School to continue to lose the options, the opportunities to take the electives in their upper grades, 11th and 12th. It's really hard to find places for 12th graders in particular because we can't offer the numerous electives that other schools can offer. So cutting us by two staffing positions would really hurt Brunswick High School.
Thank you. Questions? Mr. Young.
This question, it might be a tough question. If you want to take a pass on it, you, you're welcome to do so. But obviously, we're here, we, we have not formally acted on the superintendent's budget. My guess is that the board will support and send that budget to the commissioners, which requests money above maintenance of effort to fund the salary resource pool and the additional things that have gone up. If, in fact, the county and the state and the federal, we don't get more money, and now we have to find that shortfall, what do you think the thoughts would be within the building of making up that shortfall with an increased class sizes versus not having the increased class sizes and then not having the salary resource pool? Because, because again, what we're looking at, the majority of our budget is our people. And if, if we have that large of a shortfall and we want to make it up by giving the salary resource pool, it, it's going to have to be, most likely, at the expense of class size. So that's kind of the options that you're looking at. And I think it's why we're here now, is we have tough decisions, but we need also to know how, we, we're hearing how it's going to impact the schools, and that's not good. But are the schools willing to accept that for the other side, which is getting, getting the salary resource pool?
Brad, it's going to depend who you talk to and ask that question. Okay? If you're asking me, I would do anything before I would increase class size. Just because it has so many other ramifications that people don't know, even experienced people, until you start building a master schedule. When you have singletons and doubletons and only so many students can get in, and then these students don't, and you look at a conflict matrix and you say, okay, well, now where can I put this so it least impacts this number of students? It's just like a giant crossword puzzle, and it takes weeks of effort. And then after that, it's, okay, well, now you as a student have these options. And, and in the community I'm in, it's difficult because, you know, why can't you put one more kid in there? That's my kid. And, and we get a lot of that. So, you know, I'm, I'm just speaking for myself, okay? In, in terms of, okay, would I, you know, want to pay raise? I'm like, gosh, if you're a young teacher, of course you do. Okay? If, if you're, you know, in the system as long as I am, you know, that's not what I'm thinking about. I'm thinking about, how am I going to get, you know, access time to computer labs for kids that need to be in there that aren't practicing for PARC?
I don't envy the decisions that you have to make by any means. Teachers will do whatever they can for students. And, and we, as administrators in our building, you know, and all the support staff, we will do anything that we can for our students. I agree with Jay, you know, those that are looking for higher salaries will probably leave. You know, if they can't afford, you know, to continue to work in Frederick County, other people have moved so they could afford, you know, the housing and outside of Frederick County and commute into Frederick County. So it is a difficult time, you know? But, you know, they, the families also have to think about themselves. And so it is pretty much an individual decision.
Thank you.
Dr. McGauley.
So first of all, I, I think we have finally those like you who will manage the difficulty somehow. My problem is that, that the damage that we've done, we'll find out in about two, three years, not immediately. The impact will be seen over the next two, three years. To reverse it will be very difficult. Most people don't realize the impact. It's not like wham, it's a gradual impact on the academic achievement. Now, the, the way you explain, I see the number of electives will decrease in, in practicality. That's correct?
That is correct.
What would it do to kids pursuing APs and college admissions and all? I mean, they cannot take the sequence of courses they need to take, and my colleague, Dr. Miller, has quite explained to us the difficulty, for example, pursuing the math curriculum. It gets crowded, and with reduced teachers, number of teachers, the new alignment of courses, it may be impossible for some of the kids to finish their tracks. Is that right? My kids finished high school many years ago, so it's a new experience for me.
You, you are going to see a dramatic increase in virtual offerings. Because right now, if you take this financial literacy course and you put it virtual out there, oh my gosh, we solve a lot of problems.
Only, only if the budget supports that. I mean, that's the thing, we're, right. So we do have virtual offerings, and kids are unable to get into those classes as well. I mean, I, I don't want to, I don't want to, I don't want to interrupt your.
So go ahead, and, you know, explain to the parents. I mean, you know, you're not only explaining to us, but you're also explaining to the parents who would be listening today, that these impacts that would occur would create a damage that would be long-lasting. You've been educators for a long time, and, you know, it's not a small passing event, in my view. And these are very critical times in education.
And it's, it's not only about us looking at, you know, what does the schedule look like this year, but what did we offer, you know, last year? What do we need to make sure that we offer this year for students? So we do have to look at it more than just like, okay, this year, and this is what the schedule is, in order for students to meet their completers so that we can offer some of the AP choices, even if it's a every-other-year basis. It's, like I said, some kids lose out that way.
And also, how would it impact counseling? You know, advising kids about the courses they need to take for getting ready for college and all? Would it impact that area also?
It does, but technology is helping us with that because of the online resources to gather information independently.
So the kids can, but they have to manage on their own, then?
If, well, if, if students have the knowledge how to access that, and that, that requires meeting with your counselor to do that, we're, we're piloting that program right now at Urbana this year.
Mrs. Cusmano.
I just wanted to thank you for mentioning the, the IB program and the fact that we have so many out-of-district students. This is true, actually, for a number of our high schools. We have the arts program at TJ. We've got an ROTC program at Langinore. I think we have an engineering program at Langinore and Oakdale. And Tuscarora, too? Walkersville?
Pre-engineered.
So, and I, I love that our high schools actually sort of prove the case that it is not just, we have a school community that's more than just the community that lives right around the school. I do have students in Urbana High School, and I know that our maximum class size today, while, while the board will say the maximum class size is 35, we go well over that in some of the classes at Urbana. What is your largest class size?
It, we have some, you know, strength training classes, things like that, that are, you know, close to 50 students. But that's, you know, that, that for us is not the real issue. The real issue is, when you're in the upper levels of the IB language and you've got to take your second part of French, how do you offer that to those 10 students that need to do that as a part of their completer?
Right.
I mean, they've started this whole process, even though it's a, an 11th and a 12th grade program, you've got to start your preparation, really, in middle school.
Right. Well, and even, you know, I have to say, I, I see this movement in education, this recognition that for college courses, for instance, you may have 100 students in an English 101 course. And there is a recognition now in high school that we've got 11th and 12th graders that are college-ready, that are, you know, they're taking college courses in some instances. In honors classes, where the pacing of the class is so rapid, we maybe could do a larger class size, maybe 50 students in a, in a high school class. We don't have the buildings to provide that. We create safety issues and health issues and, and just general, you know, occupational issues by trying to get those class sizes so big, which would then allow us some flexibility for, for some of the other offerings, where we might have a reduced class size. And I, I'm actually glad that both of you are here because, on the one hand, we've got a very- very large school that has lots of offerings. Losing two teachers means twelve sections, and that is a huge blow to overall schedule purview. And then Brunswick High School, which is one of our smaller high schools, really, it's an equally decimating effect on both ends of the spectrum. It's, you know, it's not fair to say, oh, you know, our small schools take a bigger hit when we cut teachers. Everybody takes a hit. I'm not a fan of the idea of increasing class size. It is the last thing I would like to do as well, but we will be facing some very difficult budget decisions and a staff that has been overwhelmed for a long time trying to make transitions. I think what Dr. Bengali was talking about is, Dr. Miller has brought up the fact that we've got, with Common Core standards, we've got ninth and tenth graders that are actually retaking math courses because they have to meet the Common Core standards math courses. And so then, with the math offerings, not only do we have to get a larger number of students through those general courses, which, you know, maybe they have already taken, but then that student has to, within that course of three years, fulfill all that they were going to accomplish in four years because we've, you know, they've had to repeat or they've had to, and it's not repeating, it's a different math course, but it is effectively, they have lost that block of time. So, you know, I think we are all frustrated with the demands that are being placed on our school system and our students. It's not fair. The Park assessments actually have me very, I am more upset about this than I think anything. To have ninth and tenth graders today with no clear path to graduation is an absolute criminal disservice to our students.
Mrs. Kusmano, we're getting a little off the track. Did you have a direct question for them?
I didn't, but thank you for coming today.
Okay. One more.
Well, I'm going to disagree with Dr. Bengali a little bit in that there is going to be immediate impact on the high schools, immediate. The elementary in the middle will see it more. The impact on those kids' learning might be seen later, but it's going to be a big impact for them in their communities and how they educate their communities and things like that. But they won't see it till they see it. High schoolers, maybe in middle school, a little bit more with the course selection than the elementary school. Elementary school, they're pretty much not going to see it till they show up for that first day of class and they realize there's, you know, thirty-some kids in the class. That's when they're really going to, they're going to say, wait, what happened here? Middle school, you're going to see it with the course selection, if they can't get the course they want, things like that. But in high school, they're doing that right now. I just signed my daughter's form to fill out her classes right now. So if we increase, if we decide we're increasing class sizes next month or the next month, they're going to have to get a letter saying, I'm sorry, those twelve sections are now, you're not going to have that. So that impact is going to be immediate, and it could be devastating as far as the impact on their career path and their path to graduation. Because we are requiring more and more of these students, they have to have, the current ninth graders have to have government, they have to have maybe English HSA or maybe a Park HSA, which, or I mean, a Park exam for graduation requirement, which we don't know about. And then now, and then they also have to have the math, the Common Core math, as well as the HSA math for most of the kids, except a select few. And then they have to have all the other graduation, the financial literacy component of it, which, again, is huge because a lot of kids have put that off. And I know, and Jay, you're completely right. The increase in demand for the virtual school, which is what I've been trying to tell for the last couple of weeks, is going to be huge. And it's not just for those math classes because a lot of the kids are going to want to stay in the school for the math classes. And a school like Brunswick, they might have to because you don't have as many other electives. So what are you going to cut? You can't cut the courses that they are actually required for graduation. You can't do that. You can't cut your math, and you can't cut your English, you can't really cut many science. So, you know, where does that leave us? Because there are only so many times that you can take it. And when you say you're, to me, when you're already alternating a physics and an AP physics and an AP chem, I mean, how much else can you do as far, and you already have Latin three and four students in the same class together? How much more can you do at a school like Brunswick? How much more? There's not much more that you can do and provide, you know, those opportunities for the kids. And that's where these decisions get extremely, extremely difficult for all of us. So I want to know, I'm going to go a little bit, is, you know, again, we're getting more mandates from the state, more mandates came down as far as the discipline regulations. So, you know, not even talking about all the graduation requirements and things like that, if you guys, have you guys seen some of that stuff?
I think we, there's work that we have to do in terms of, I mean, I know staff is looking at the policy versus the regs, and so I don't know that, I don't think you're ready to discuss what you're going to have to specifically do.
Here's what I can tell you briefly, okay? Last Wednesday, I sent on the principal's task force at the state level, and I sit at a table with representatives from Montgomery County, PG, et cetera, and we are all discussing where we are in the process statewide, okay? We are like behind a lot of other folks in terms of resources. And what I mean by that is, when, you know, folks at Montgomery County tell me, hey, we have our own, within the building at the high school level, staff development person, you know, we have our own intervention specialists, et cetera, and it goes on and on, we have our own tech specialist, that's all that person does, okay? Those are resources that are there. Then, and then all our teachers, you know, they hear about Montgomery County, they just, you know, got a communication of a pay raise. Where's that coming from? That's coming from political cooperation. That's where that's coming from, okay? And so that's a big part of, you know, what we're all faced with here.
And they fund above the state average per student. We fund below the state average per student. And so it does impact everything.
Okay. We are going long on time, so I want to limit us to questions. Go ahead, Dr. Bengali.
Well, what I want to make clear here is, the board has not yet adopted a budget. There are no cuts. What we are looking at is the cuts that will be forced upon us by the commissioners. So, you know, parents and the teachers and everybody should know, the board has not yet made any decision of cuts. And as Mr. Young said, it's highly likely that we may forward some version of the superintendent's budget.
Is that a question? No, I, I'm not kidding. We, you guys have lots to do, so we want to be respectful of that. Did you have a question?
No.
Okay. Does it start with who, what, where, and why?
Oh, I do have a question. Jay, do you have your board up yet?
I'm working on it.
Okay.
This will impact it greatly.
For any, for anyone who hasn't seen on the board, who hasn't seen Mr. Bruno's board, it is a mastermind of how schedules work, and it really, it's a visual, I'm a visual learner, and so for me to see the visual representation he does of his board, and do you guys all do visual boards? Do you all put the visual, so?
I use a spreadsheet.
A spreadsheet, yes. And I've seen the spreadsheet, too, and Brian has an excellent spreadsheet. So I would, if you guys needed any more, if you had any more questions about it, I mean, they have some masterful ways of showing that, that really just take your breath away as far as the impact. It's really.
Joy, one last comment. This is the time of year when they're indecisive about, okay, how are we going to make this determination? Everybody that works in the school system knows that's going on, okay? So when Nancy or I want to talk to one of our staff members about anything, you know, and they say, Mr. Bruno would like to see you, or Ms. Dow would like to see you, this fear comes over everybody, like, oh, no. And it's, we're not popular people at this time of year, you know? And that's not who we are. But it's part of the process of uncertainty. And so I would, I would just make this suggestion, that you leave class size the way it is this year, and if you're going to mess with it at all next year, start talking about next year now. And then we can make serious determinations, say, as system-wide, our priority is this, this, and this, as opposed to this. So if you're teaching this, then, you know, chances are, you better take a paraxis in that.
Well, I appreciate that, and thank you both for coming. I know your time is very valuable, and we appreciate your candor and all of your input.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. So, the work before us today, we have not really discussed, I think I want everybody to pull out, of course, I don't know why, I can never find my pieces of paper. This, it says attachment A, but it's fiscal year 2015 budget working file, Superintendent's Recommended Budget 2.0. Because we really need to have a philosophical discussion about these priorities that are set forth in the increase to the, to last year's budget. And if those are the priorities we want to support with that full funding, if we don't think that's adequate, and the more I hear, the more I'm convinced that that isn't really adequate, because it is our job to ask for adequate funding. So, to take a look at these items and decide if those are, from what we are hearing, from what we know as a board, if those are indeed the priorities and if we're going to support them.
Joy, is this is the one that starts with expenditures?
Yes.
Okay. Be sure I have the wrong, right one.
I have it up.
It's up on the screen.
Oh, well, I can't see any of that.
Is it 2.0, 2.1?
2.0. 2.0. And then what would be the most helpful in addition to that, do you think, Les? Maybe the, the.
The impact statement?
The impact statement would be the other document that you would probably all need to reference that would make this discussion more helpful to you.
The first impact statement I pulled up here is the academic curriculum instructional technology and school support.
Right. So the Superintendent's Recommended Budget version 2.0, impact statement based on estimated state and local funding.
Okay, on the computer, which, excuse me, which one is it?
It is the one that says ACTSS impact statement.
I've got positions impact statement. And, oh, and I've got, thank you. Got it.
And these are impact statements based on the positions that were included in the Superintendent's Recommended Budget. And so what staff has done is put together with these positions, what would be the impact if these are no longer included in the budget that is proposed.
And I, just for everyone's information, ACTS stands for Accountability. Oh, sorry. Or Assessment. Curriculum, Technology, Student Services. And so that represents the divisions that are under Dr. Lockard. And then the BSG is the Business Services Group. That would be the departments and the divisions that are under Dr. Vonitabus. And at one of the previous meetings, the board asked staff to begin to take a look at impacts. And so we felt the most important place to start would be to say, what would be the impact of the things we've put in here that are above maintenance, you know, that are in the request that is above maintenance of effort? Because we feel that these are things that are critical to fund. We based our recommendation on the priorities that we had heard from the community, both as a board and as a superintendent, and that recruiting and retention of quality staff, and then the need for additional resources to support our schools. We put the third priority, the technology, in a separate ask that was outside of maintenance of effort. And so, you know, once again, just in terms of a context for what these documents are and why they're there. If the board today chooses to say, well, you know, we see this, however, and you want to begin to look at, you know, taking some of these out, or, well, you know, what if, you know, we said we wanted to fund this, but then there are some other pieces within the budget that we want to look at and get a sense of impact? And I know we provided a list of departmental cuts if we were to take five percent. We did not ask staff to do impact statements for each of those things until we had a more clear direction from the board in terms of what is it you really want to examine? And then we can certainly provide the impacts there.
Where is the, we had asked, where is the, for the extra technology piece, where is that budget? Where's that numbers?
That was not something we were going to include in today's discussion, so.
It's a separate request, and I don't believe we've gotten a breakdown.
Right.
Have we gotten a breakdown for the six million request?
We have not discussed that at one of the work sessions, no. We have the information available, but once again, trying to chunk this into what we're going to deal with today, what will we deal with on Friday, what will we deal with.
And I just want to remind the board that we, this is due to the commissioners, not this Friday, but next. So we have to, we have to start moving the ball forward because we have very few meetings up until that time to send something over.
If we're going to submit extra, the six million, then we, I need that breakdown.
Okay.
If anything extra needs to be submitted, because that is, well, that is a big part of, you know, where your vision takes you. I mean, I don't have an issue supporting the budget, sending it over to the commissioners, things like that, but there are other avenues and other ways that I think are priorities. And so that's what, you know, a lot of them fall into the technology, the career and tech, the technology piece, the virtual school. For me, a lot of that falls into the technology aspect of it. So if we're going to do almost like a base budget, and then here's what we.
Well, let me just clarify. In the past, we never did a formal request to the commissioners for above maintenance of effort. So the year that they had the 3.2 million and we were looking at wireless, that didn't go over with the budget that went on March 1st.
Right.
I understand what you're saying in terms of what are the pieces we're asking. Remember that anything in a one-time funding request, you're going to be limited to what you can ask for. So the conversation around the virtual school, we have a presentation planned in March to really give you the details, but that would be very difficult to do as a one-time funding request because the ability to offer online courses requires staffing. And one of the things that we heard in, you know, one of the discussions earlier was, why didn't we have more Foundations of Technology courses offered? It's because we didn't have staff who were ready to teach those and willing to teach those. So you can't put a staffing request for the virtual school into that one-time funding pocket. That would have to go into your conversation here around the operating budget.
But then, again, since we don't, we haven't had that discussion, again, it goes to vision and plan. And if we haven't had those discussions, and we're forwarding this budget over, it's hard, right now, it's hard for me to add, like, Joy was saying about supporting the vision, things like that. It's very hard for me to add anything into this budget because I don't have a plan for it. We don't know, I don't know about the program, I don't know where it's going, I haven't even seen the contract. So that part is very difficult for me to do.
Well, at this point, we're not even to the point where we're going to add anything to the budget. At this point, we haven't even discussed.
You asked me, you asked if we agreed with the priorities, things like that. There are other priorities that I have.
Right.
But how can I shift things around in the budget before we send it over?
Well, I think we can come to an agreement on whether these priorities are priorities. And we can talk about the funding levels of the priorities separately, but in terms of whether these are the priorities that we want to support, that's the discussion that we need to have today and get through, at least that, yes.
So I would just like to note that as we're looking at the ACTSS impact statement, and it talks about the impacts that at our current levels, that we're not hitting the marks that we would choose to mark in consideration of the school psychologists, special ed teachers, speech and language pathologists, or speech and language therapist providers. Even the budget request, so our recommendation from the special ed department was that to meet the vision that they see for themselves, that they would like in order to provide the services that are required, mandated, they had requested 56.84 special ed positions, 17.4 speech and language positions, and 15.5 school psychologists. We are looking at a budget that reflects five, I believe it, it's reflecting.
It's about a third, about a third of the request.
Yes. So five psychologists, five speech and language, and nineteen special ed teachers. That is, this is, it is a step in a direction that I think that we need to take, but it actually doesn't close these gaps. So this, the impact statement, even if we got the budget, even if we got the budget that the superintendent is supporting in regards to our special ed arena and the 504 arena, we would still be, we are still short, understaffed, overworked, and really struggling to provide the basic services that are required for these students. And, you know, again, this is, one of my frustrations, I continue to be frustrated that we aren't looking outside of, it's not just the county commissioner standing in the way of this budget. It is a state that mandates that we comply. It's a federal government that has effectively cut our. It's a federal government that has effectively cut our, cut our, you know, revenues.
Mrs. Cusmano, with all due respect, I think we all understand that, but we, we have an hour, less than an hour and a half left, and we really need to come up with some concrete decisions that's going to move the ball forward on this budget. And to discuss something that's going to, it's a really long-term solution, we can certainly discuss that, it's very important, I agree with you, but we really need to stick to what we're talking about today. Do you have something, Dr. Bengali?
No.
But, but...
One thing is, are we going to accept these, are we going to add to these priorities?
Well, I think we have to discuss them first. I really don't, I think we're talking about adding at the point where we haven't even said are...
Do we agree with these priorities?
And, and, I mean, I agree with you, Mrs. Cusmano. These are, these are not, I look at the staffing plan that we got back in 2000, or last year, the original staffing plan, system-wide, as well as the recent one that we got from special education. I mean, I feel like those are all going to go in our box of, we need to plan for the out-years to get here.
No, of course, there's never going to be one year.
But we have to catch up.
Right.
We're going to have to put some foundation in place.
There's never going to be one year that we get it all done. I just wanted to make sure that we're not having this vision that if this is the budget that we agree with, and it moves on to the commissioners, and let's say by some miracle it actually went through exactly as is, it doesn't actually get us to a point of fulfillment of where we need to be in many of these areas. I, yeah, I just, so, I just wanted to get back to, I support, in the areas that we're growing, some of them are mandated areas, some of them are the pension shift, some of them are health insurance increases. We don't have control over that. There's a market, that's a market obligation that is rising. And so, and negotiations are still ongoing, and so, there's, we can't be completely clear about that, but we have some projection of those funds. So, what we're asking for in the academic arena is predominantly, I just, so the ACTSS we have, it's predominantly the special ed and 504 plans, the homeschool monitor, which we have a growing collection of homeschoolers, a growing subscription of homeschoolers.
Well, currently, right, there's a one and a half position.
So, the curriculum instruction funds that we have to find are, there is a normal cycle of life of the tools and, and resources that we're using in the classrooms. Common Core has certainly added to that list of what we need to obtain, and is still actually, and still impacting, because we're not entirely clear what we need in addition for the, for the park assessments. And, and just getting to the bottom of the impact statement, so the database architect and administrator, I, this is an area where I share Dr. Miller's concern about our vision and our ability to not just identify what we need, because I think we're actually pretty good at identifying where we have some shortfalls. But we, but we have been allocated funds in the past for technology, and I don't feel that we've always made wise investments or with a very good vision about a five-year plan so that we can begin to chisel away at it year after year. Right now, we are, and again, truly, it's the state that's putting us in this position of, we had this focus of smart boards, and we've got smart boards hanging everywhere, and the park assessments are going to require that we have more, you know, personal use devices.
Just to clarify on this impact statement, the technology or the IT things that we're talking about in the impact statement, it really talks about, it's really not...
It's an enterprise level. It's an enterprise-level solution, and it is something we are desperately in need of because it is difficult to make the decisions to manage a school system when you are so, you know, woefully not informed with the, you know, what do we have and where is it?
I wouldn't call us woefully uninformed, but we do have a lot of information, a lot of different places, and it would really help us to have it all in one place. We could, we could ask for a report with all kinds of different data in one report rather than the way we kind of have it now, which is three different pieces of paper.
So, my concern with this, though, and this is because we have made these investments in the past for PeopleSoft software and solutions that are enterprise-level, that have the capabilities, but then our planning and our deployment and installation and setup has been flawed.
Mrs. Cusmano, I can't speak to the past.
Right.
We have Mr. Root here this morning. If you would like to ask him any questions about how he envisions this position being used and what it is we hope to achieve going forward, I know he'd be happy to answer you.
Sure, and I probably will have a couple of questions for you, Mr. Root.
Well, why don't we let him frame? Would you mind on this impact statement, the, the database and administrator items, and what, what are involved in those and exactly what that's going to help us do?
So, what we talked about was, Mrs. Cusmano brought up PeopleSoft, for instance. So, we do have PeopleSoft, and we have guys that can quickly pull information from PeopleSoft and use PeopleSoft. And we also have an HR system, we have a financial system, we have a student information system. Sorry, I'm going to hit the button.
That's fine.
All of that is disparate. We don't have anything combined in one place where people can make use of it. More concerning to me is the fact that there is no one single entity who's responsible for all of that data. We have a PeopleSoft team that's doing work here, and we have an HR team in PeopleSoft as well, too, and we have an SIS team that's doing work with the student information. My team, of course, maintains active directory and all the information there. There is no single place where we are able to pull all that data together and use it. And all effective organizations, if you study, large organizations are all relying on data. It's all data-driven, all data analysis, everywhere you go today. So, we have been funded on the technology, but we haven't been funded on the support to implement that technology in a way that is as efficient and useful as possible. More importantly, we need someone that's responsible for that health and welfare of the technology to make sure that those investments have been well-spent and are well-maintained.
So, here's my concern, because I realize that you are relatively new with the county. I was an employee for a period of time, I've been a mom for a long, long time, and I have been paying attention to these things over time. And what I see as a major flaw historically is that we've made these investments and then tried to kluge the support together internally, using staff that don't have the skills. And I'm not trying to disparage our staff in any way, but it's like asking a plumber to go build your house and just expecting it to be a great outcome because he does plumbing, and that's construction. And so, I'm looking at a position that I don't believe is a single position. And I see that we have about a 10-year lag behind what most businesses have been doing in terms of their ability to access their information. And so, again, as a mom, as a taxpayer, as a board member, and as someone who has worked here, I don't see a good answer. And what I see is actually the same path that we have historically taken that will end us somewhere, it'll be a house.
Mrs. Cusmano, I'm sorry. I have to respectfully disagree. Last year, we went through a very painful reorganization of part of the technology team where we actually took a look at job descriptions, we changed job descriptions, we had a complete reorganizing of our student information group and how we were delivering services in some of the areas related to this position that we're asking for in this budget. We hired some new people. We kept some people. We are woefully behind. We need a data warehouse. We can't do it all, fell swoop in one budget, one request, but we've got to, as you said, build the capacity, build the vision. Mr. Root has been here since July. He has been working very closely with his team to take a look at what are the things we may need to do here to get us to the next step. This we saw as a critical first step, working with newly-placed staff in building a data warehouse to begin to move us forward. But you're right, we are behind, and just like the requests for special education, we're not asking to try to do it all in this budget cycle. It's going to be a three-to-five-year cycle before we are able to do all of this. So, I appreciate, you know, your concern about, do we have the right horses to make this happen? That was part of what we did last year to position us to be able to take this next step.
And I know, I know you weren't trying to disparage staff by, by your comments, but I do want to reiterate that that was a long and carefully thought-out process that this board was involved in. And we took, staff took a very long look at who we needed and where we needed them to support the mission of the organization.
I do understand. I am looking at our budget request. I'm looking at an identified single position with a, with a loose description of that position that is more than one job.
Well, I think you're going to find a lot of things that are inadequate in this budget because it's really not an adequate budget. And what we're trying to do is make up for the last five years of flat funding, and having to, as you point out, always increase the things that we have to do and have to deliver, and always asking folks to do more of. That being said, I want to move us on because we have a little over an hour left. Let's just start with some of our goals because we, we're sort of spinning in circles.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Root.
Absolutely.
So, you know, overarching, we have staffing goals, and that's staffing which includes a salary resource pool, and I want to remind everybody that that salary resource pool is, includes increase in salaries and as well as increased staffing. I think we've heard public comment, as well as from our administrators today, what that means on a daily basis for our schools, our students, and our, and our staff. Sub to that would be the staff that supports our special education students, which is not necessarily growing in population, but certainly growing in increased needs. And we've had a special education staff that's put a lot of things, sort of front-loaded that program in, in a lot of ways so that we save money down the road. So, to me, that's, that's an investment that is going to pay off for us later on, not just in terms of student performance and student achievement, but in terms of actual real dollars and savings. And then you have the support for the other services. We just talked about the IT needs that we have, and especially as we walk, go forward in terms of strategic planning. Data is the most important thing that we are going to need in strategic planning, and it's whether, it's, and the data that we're talking about incorporating is operational as well as student achievement, all of those things together. So, you know, I think we have to, as a board, bring it to the level of, we can't look at these numbers piecemeal and focus on one line item. We really have to be much more global than that and decide, do we need increased staffing? Do we want to support teachers' pay increases? Do we want to move forward and put, make the next step in giving us the foundation for increased ability to track where our equipment is, to track where our students are, to track where all of our resources are working and how they're working, and then make sure that we're meeting the needs of our most vulnerable students, and that would be something that I would think we would all support.
So, what, so, to me, all these priorities are very important. They are all high-priority items. So, what are we trying to do?
We haven't discussed whether or not they are high priority for this board and to what level that they're high priority. So, I think we need to have discussion around that.
Are you going to take one category at a time and discuss?
We could do that if you want to. The biggest category would be staffing and the salary and staffing resource pool.
So, then we...
Did you want to start us off on a discussion on that?
No, but we need to sort of set an order in which we're going to discuss so we get somewhere.
Yep.
Otherwise, it'll be a general discussion.
Okay.
That should be a general discussion. It is a staffing and salary, and it should maintain a general discussion.
And we're not, as I said, we're not going to be talking necessarily about numbers. I think we need to focus on what the...
Yeah. What I meant by general discussion, we can't discuss all categories at the same time. We've got to take one category at a time and decide where we stand on that.
Either that, or you can, you can start a discussion off on, there's something that you don't support here in terms of a priority.
Yes.
Myself, I'm going to start us off. I, I've looked at this budget, I've looked at the priorities, I've listened to the community, we've had public comment, I know what I see at my schools, I know what I see when I go walking, traveling around the county and talking to teachers and parents and staff. And we're at a point where we have made do with a budget that is inadequate. We have not funded a variety of these categories to the, to the extent that we should be funding them. And we can no longer function that way. So, my, my own feeling would be that, would I like to add to this budget? Yes, because I, I don't think it's, if we're talking about, it doesn't allow us to look long-term and to say, you know, there's 180 kids waiting to join CTC classes that can't because we don't have the ability to meet those needs. We, we don't want to have magnet kids having to leave their home schools to get enrichment, but, you know, we can't put a highly-abled learner program or a true magnet program in every single elementary school. We can't even put a math specialist in every elementary school. So, for me, this is, this is what we can get along with in order to rebuild, to get to where we want to go. So, those are my comments.
I think all these categories are well-balanced, and given the political realities, it's a modest increase requested. I still feel that one area that's not been put here is curriculum technology expansion. There were 200 kids on waiting lists, all non-college-bound students get 100% jobs.
Not all non-college-bound students.
Well, college-bound students go to college, but the non, non...
If they're going to the workforce, they get jobs.
Yes.
Are you talking about CTC?
No, but 200 students on the waiting list, some of them do actually...
Are you talking about 200 students on CTC?
Study our STEM careers and go on to college.
There's a lot of programs there that are college. Don't, don't, it is college.
No, I think he's saying that if they're going straight into, I don't want to speak for you.
They're going to career, they're, they've chosen to go into career, not go to college, they all get jobs.
No, a lot of those students are choosing to, it is, it is one...
It's not that those who choose not to go to college would get a job. There is this, this course prepares them for a career.
The course also prepares them for college, particularly the bio med.
That was not my point. That's a separate question.
I understand, but just don't, please don't say it like that because it is, it's really something we fought hard for as far as, it is not just a career-based, or it is not just a workforce-based, it is college and career.
Yeah. I think we need to add money for that program, and if you want, I would make a motion for that.
That's up to you, that's your motion.
I would, I would like to just, I'd like to speak to that because there's, there are some other areas that I think are underfunded in the budget as well. And I would just, I would caution this because what I hear us doing and saying in our presentations, we continue to have these presentations about technology offerings and how, you know, we can have a student in the classroom and learning from around the world, and they're online, and there's this, and there's that, and we don't actually have the capacity to do that. We will be making decisions about staffing, and we could potentially be making decisions about cuts based on ideas, as Mr. Burna was talking about, we're piloting, having students research their own schedules and sign up online as if they were at community college or something. It's wonderful, we want to move in that direction, we want to have these offerings, but we talk about them, and then we take action as if we are ready, as we, as if we're there. And so, we can take an action, and that is available to a student. And that is not the reality. And I would just caution, if you're going to add money to CTC, to please recognize the capacity that, you know, the CTC building has, it's bursting at the seams right now. 200 students are waiting, not because we don't want them in the doors, but because we do not have the capacity. And so... And so I really do feel like this is an area that needs to be, it needs capital funding, it needs operational funding, it needs curriculum funding and a plan. I would be opposed to picking a bucket of money and sort of throwing it in a direction and hoping it works out.
Before you joined the board, we had discussed this in detail in terms, in the context of Lincoln A. Wacon Building. The idea was to expand CTC to Lincoln A. Building. Advantage would be that these 200 students would get, or more than 200 students may get this into their area. I think it's a job creator. It's good for county. It would add additional areas that are needed in technology. And I think it will also help narrow the achievement gap. It's an area which would be very productive for its use of money. It doesn't need that much money. And we were told how the building can be fixed up with available funds. What it needs is roughly 1.3 million of which, about half a million would go for one time cost for equipment and about 800,000 per year for salaries. Dr. Alba, am I sort of in the ballpark?
Yes, sir. And at the time, the board discussed that because the salaries would be a recurring cost. That was not the option that was selected for Lincoln A. And the building has been kind of put on hold.
So we have a Wacon Building. We have the need for the students to take these courses. And not all students are ready to go to college. This is a nice option for students who don't go to college, but are very bright.
Would the one time costs for starting up, it's not really a startup, but one time costs for equipment or materials at CTC fall into a one time, the one time cost category for outside of maintenance of effort funding?
Potentially it could, yes.
Right.
And we have part of that in the CIP, don't we, Ray? Part of it, not the complete piece, but we kept it in there, right?
Only, only limited event was included in the capital budget, basically for the server, other connections to the network and so forth. But actual CTC equipment was not part of the budget discussion for the Lincoln A. Building.
What programs specifically?
For the capital budget, it was included as a spend, but it wasn't part of that piece that we put in the capital budget.
Do we, do we know the, CTC is a very diverse, they've got all different programs. Do we know specifically what programs we were seeking to put at Lincoln?
Yes, there was a very detailed plan presented by the previous principal here. And each area was defined. So there is a plan that exists.
I understand that. Do you know what areas we're moving in?
Yes, so one of them was biotechnology. I mean, I don't have all the details right now.
So because one thing that occurs to me.
But it was a well-developed plan.
And CTC is always a good investment. I am a huge fan of CTC. And I don't mean my questions to take away from that. But I do want to point out that the movement in the state has been more of a partnership between our high school levels and our community colleges. And we now have a mandate to compensate students when they take classes at the community college level. CTC has a wonderful program. FCC does also have some of these skills training, HVAC. I think they've got electrical. I don't know all of the course offerings that they have, but I would be interested in seeing if there's a partnership opportunity that would lend itself to a more efficient use of these same funds, but maybe be able to serve more students in a broader capacity.
And again, we haven't had that discussion. Again, that is one of the things we brought up. This is what I mean by that. We haven't had that discussion about, we were bringing up about the different aspects and the different academies, so to speak, at the different high schools and how we were going to do that and how maybe we could put that more in the high schools. And we've got Frederick High, you know, that we're designing and building. Is there, is there something that we can, we can bring there? So again, it speaks to what I was saying about the vision. And we haven't had the discussion about, you know, the vision and the plan of what we want for that. This, the thing, the expansion at Lincoln would, would help some as far of it, but it doesn't meet the vision of what we want for the school system. I don't know. Does it meet the community interest and the community base? We do a lot of work with the biotech and the biomed. How do we, are we expanding those programs? Where do we do it? How, so there's a lot to think about with that. And is it just going to be, like you were saying, is it just putting this money to here? Or do we want a greater overall vision? And again, those are conversations we have not put on to have yet. And it is something that's been requested for months. So I don't know where to go with that. That's why I'm saying I'm having a hard time with this as far as, do we support this? Do I support more, yes. Do I support more, yes. Do I support changes in how we do our staffing, staffing forms? Yes. But again, does it meet with the overall vision and plan that we have?
Brad, did you have your hand up before?
I just wanted to share that we do have a group of principals and other, I'm not even sure who's on the committee, but they're looking at the high school academy programs, as you said, in terms of what would be, you know, a comprehensive way to look at this. We have talked about dual enrollment, moving beyond academic courses and looking at the Monroe Center and things like that. So, and at one point, this board was talking about maybe private, public partnerships would be the way to fund CTC. So once again, at a time when we can pull all of that together and have that conversation, the work group that's looking at our high school academies is supposed to have a recommendation to Dr. Lockhart by April. Once again, the academies were one of those things where schools were kind of told, make this happen. We never put the central staffing or the funding behind it. So as we look at this, that's one of the things that once again, as you're thinking long-term budget objectives, if we're going to do it, we're going to have to staff it and support it so that it doesn't fall on the schools to make a decision between some of those sections that Mr. Burnow so eloquently described this morning. With now an academy being mixed in there as well, we've got to staff that centrally in order for them to survive.
Yeah, because if you go into the IB program, it's, if you're in the IB program, the class sizes might not be as much of an impact because that section is an IB section. And if you have 20 kids in it, it might not be as affected. But having the whole program is what might be affected if you can keep maintaining the program.
I just, I just would like to sort of recognize in the economic realities that we are in, the idea of the school system siloed off from the, from the community colleges and the county government, that day has really ended. And so it's very important as we move forward, if there are opportunities, especially I feel for career training because we have had a statewide investment in our community colleges. We have a health center in Mount Airy that, you know, as we're prepping our students and our, and our career and college-ready students for the workforce, if we've already got programs in place and abilities for them to study that, if we could partner and make just the best use of those funds, that's so much better than everybody having their own program at a large expense.
I don't think we have siloed off. I think we have made a lot of progress interacting with community college. Our students take a lot of courses at community college. Wherever we can partner, we have partnered. My assessment is that CTC, what we do is complementary to what community college does. And we have space there. We have a need there. We have students on waiting. If these students could have taken courses, there are 200 students, I don't think community college could accommodate them. And the waiting list would increase if we had the facility.
Yeah, I'm troubled with Lincoln too because I feel like it's this empty building that, that there's this, we're constantly looking to sort of put something there. And when I imagine 200 students, it's a relatively small building compared to CTC. It is back in the neighborhood in Frederick City. The parking capacity, you know, it was built as an elementary school that would have teachers, and so you'd have maybe 50 or 60 teachers parking there. We're talking about putting 200 drivers, you know, close to adult students who would be studying there. I'm not entirely sure that that's the right fit, even physically. I just, I recognize that there was a presentation. I wasn't here for that presentation.
You're not being appointed yet on the board.
Mm-hmm. It's hard for me to imagine, I just, you know, again, I would love to expand some of CTC, but it's hard for me to imagine that working very well.
I just want to clarify again. CTC, the investments there, it isn't just, there are some links with the community college. And I do think we need to investigate how we use, especially the non-academic, and how we can merge some of those programs as far as the dual enrollment go. But you are talking, it is engineering, architectural, biomed. You are talking Cisco. We have award-winning Cisco programs there. These are kids that are incredibly bright and a lot of them do go on to college. So that's their career pathway that does involve CTC, not just going right into the workforce. So just please, please remember that.
I think that statement was misinterpreted. What I said was the students who choose not to go to college can find a good track at CTC. Those students, there are additionally students who want to go to college engineering courses and they also find a good home there.
Yes, so they're not mutually exclusive.
Yes, that was not the point. That is what your interpretation is.
Okay, what I think I'm hearing is, I mean, there's overwhelming support for CTC. But I, I do think that that is, we do, we don't have a budget that allows us right now to, I think we can talk about what our goals are, but in terms of the budget, I don't think that we're at a point right now where we can include it this year in terms of building us for what we need to do. And we absolutely need to. But some of these needs that I'm seeing, especially in special ed, are critical. And I, I don't know that this is the year or two. I understand that, that, I understand that we, we, really our job is to say, what is, what should we be offering students? And unfortunately, we're not at the level where, we're at the level where we have to now rebuild some things in order to get to the position to now offer things to students that are new and different and expanded. So we're looking at a budget where we have to come and rebuild some things first.
It's not a huge amount. $800,000 is about 0.2% of the budget. So, but the benefits are far more and it serves the needs of students, especially socio-economically depressed students who do not have facilities to go to college and all. They were looking for a career and 100% job creator is a good program.
Right, but I think to expand it, we're talking about the need for space and that, and do we want to create, we have Lincoln A., which is, which is available, but.
And we did discuss the space availability, number of students accommodated. This was very well presented, as you remember.
Right. No, oh, I absolutely do. I just, I think that we have to be a little more, when we look at it, we have to look at it systemically and as, as part of the whole. And we're just not at a place that we can do that in terms of planning. We just can't. We are stymied by having to fall back on facilities that we have versus where do we want this to be? I would really rather us do a strategic look at because I think that there would be a lot more kids involved in CTC if there were programming at their school. And I think we eventually have to get to the place where they don't have to travel to get to the CTC program. So do we, do we look down the road in five years and say, that's where we want to get to? So let's hold back this investment now because we might not, we might go three years down the line and go, geez, if we hadn't done this at Lincoln A., we would have this pot of money and that we could, I mean, that's, we really have to take that.
But the core, the core and the backbone program of CTC, you could not put in to the high schools because of the investment that a lot of, like Bechdel has made.
Yep.
A lot of investment into these programs as far as equipment. And you just can't replicate that in the regular high. So again, it comes down to vision. And if we keep putting on hold what we think is the innovative changes that have made this system what it is today, if we keep putting those on hold and if we don't come up with a plan of what we want to do, then we cannot advocate for that plan. So we can't keep putting things on hold because we don't have the funding. We either need to figure out how we're going to get the funding or we need to come up with a plan to advocate or rearrange the existing funds that we have now. That's the only options that we have. But again, we're getting so much pushed down on us. I understand the timing of everything, but those are some of the things that we need to make known. And like, as Halleen was saying, that we need to make it known to the state very loud and clear. And I think that's, that has to be part of our vision and what we do.
I agree with you and that's absolutely part of the process. Unfortunately, we have, I'm sorry, a week and a half to get this budget.
And I, and I know, but that's, but don't, this isn't a be all and end all. And there may be changes to the budget even after, obviously, there's going to probably have to be changes to the budget as we get more feedback from the commissioners. We'll know more. But also as we go forward with the strategic plan that we have in the vision. So putting this over.
I just wanted to indicate that staff chose not to focus on the CTC expansion this year as we put this budget forward because we want it to do it in conjunction with a look at our high school academies. What's happening with dual enrollment? Where do all of those pieces come together? And that's why we felt that, you know, as I said, we have a committee report coming in the spring. We could have time to have a dialogue with the board. The business community has talked with us about, you know, how can we do a better job of partnering with them and getting support? So as you said, there are many little pieces of this puzzle that have to come together. And we want it to have that conversation in the spring, give ourselves a year for planning. And that would probably be something then that we would be looking for in the next budget cycle.
Well, I was going to wrap up the comments again. Dr. Bingham, I think we all are strong supporters of CTC. And I think what Dr. Albin just said there is an appropriate course of action. I mean, we still have space in our, some of our schools where we have the availability of maybe using those spaces instead of investing more money in Lincoln. Currently, the Academy of Finance has moved from the CTC location over to TJ High School. And so there may be other programs we can use there. But as we move forward, again, if we, if we identify, and I agree with you, if there's workforce, work-ready positions of skills that we can teach, I think we can reach out to business and industry to help fund either the startup or implementation or even ongoing operations, those particular programs. But I think we need to have a plan. I think we need staff to be prepared for it. And to add it in here at this point without that plan, where we already have so many other areas where we're behind, it just, this year's not the time.
So would we have a presentation in spring or so on this?
I would like to suggest we have a presentation and then some work sessions because you were presented one plan, but then maybe that's the, moving forward, it's sort of a larger, you know, larger view plan.
Thank you.
Yes.
I just had, I had a question for the superintendent on the OPEB funding. This is a painful subject, I think, for everyone. I have to tell you, I'm surprised every year when I hear teachers and union supporters advocating that we not fund OPEB or forget about OPEB, when this is actually the trust fund that provides for employment, post-employment benefits after retirement, their health insurance. This is their benefit. I am very concerned about the growing unfunded liability. And I just would like to ask the superintendent for your reasoning in, we've allocated a $3 million amount to OPEB this year.
Right now, we're trying to deal with immediate needs. In part of my presentation to the public, I talked about the fact that maintenance isn't maintaining, it's cutting. And is the state, when they fund, will do at least an inflationary increase, which they cap at 1%. If we had received 1% above maintenance of effort for the last five years, the current budget we're looking at would be $27 million more. We could do everything we've asked for and get OPEB back up to where it was before. At this point, while it may not be ideal, we have a trust fund that we have not had to touch, that continues to grow and earn interest. We are able at this point in time to handle the obligations for our retirees in our current operating budget with all of the changes around the Healthcare Affordability Act, with options that Mrs. Pellegrino talked about earlier and we had the consultant here to handle questions. Those are employee benefits. They are not the same kind of liability as you face when you have a retirement that's a set figure. Benefits change and evolve over time. We felt comfortable that for this budget at this time, that did not need to be a priority that we were putting forward as staff.
I'm hearing, the only other stumbling block that I'm hearing out of this conversation is, and that was raised by Mrs. Kusumano, is the, the data, the database issue, our capacity. our capacity issue in IT, and the system-wide sort of systems integration. Is anybody else concerned about that priority?
Not about that priority, but I do have the same concern that Ms. Cusmano has, that we, again, are not addressing that need. And if, if, if in fact, we're going to ask for, everybody says, what we need, again, I think what we need is to also fund that promise. And so I would like to see that included in to the additional request for some additional amount above the $3 million. We know from the actuary it was here, even what we had had in there at $14 million was not enough, but it was at least a much more significant step towards trying to meet that goal. So to not ask for it at this point is, if you're going to ask for the other things that are important, and they are, to me, that's as important as well.
So what level would you ask for?
I would like to see it back at least at the 14 million where we were.
And you would be, you would, you would, then you're talking about adding that on to the 17.5?
If you were going to sit here and say, we're asking for what we need and what we think we need to operate the system, that's an expensive operating the system.
So the point was made, the caring for teachers and all, I'm a great supporter of teachers myself. And what we need right now to make decisions based on political realities. If we ask for too much, we are not going to get anything. But if you ask a modest amount, highly likely, at least somewhat possible, the commissioners may approve it.
But I believe I heard you at the last meeting say, we were supposed to ask for what we need to operate the system, not what we think we'll get.
No, we want to be, I mean, I don't think I said that. What we, we, this is a modest increase, and the community realizes. Last night you heard, there was a tremendous support for the budget superintendent's presentation. I would not like to increase it, and the OPEB issue is a temporary issue right now. In the long term, we will catch up again.
How do you catch up when you underfund year after year after year?
Political realities will change, and we will start getting more budget. But that's a long-term discussion. Right now, this request, I think, is appropriate.
And I also am confused about why we fixate on OPEB when every other category is underfunded. So if we're going to, if we're going to say that, well, then let's go back to every other category and fully fund them at what we think is the optimal amount.
Well, again, what I heard at the last meeting is that we're supposed to ask for what you need to fund the system, and this is a part of our expensive funding the system.
And this was cut last year, and which, and it was said then, we'll try it for next year. Well, it's next year.
I would just like to point out, the OPEB, the unfunded liability was identified seven years ago when we were in a really robust economy. And there were decisions during those years to short-fund that trust fund as well. And the difference between OPEB and all of these categories is that OPEB is actually, it is, it's an obligation we have already committed to. So if we have not committed to hire five, I'm just going to pick on the psychologists, and I mean no harm, but if we haven't committed to hire five psychologists, but once we hire them, we then have committed to them. Once they, once we have hired them, we've committed a salary and benefits to them, and part of that benefit is their health insurance in retirement. And so this is something we long ago promised, we continue to promise today. What we have identified is not something politically, economically, in this volatile economic climate, but literally over the long run, as statistically our employees retire and age out, what the needs are going to be versus the trust fund we have set up, there is a shortfall, and it is growing and has been growing for a long, long time. So our actuary comes and says, you can close that gap if over the next 20 years you commit to put aside additional funding, then you won't run out of money when that, when that claim begins to happen.
I understand, but you do understand that that gap changes. That gap is always changing.
It's going up.
Well, yeah, but we have, we also have the ability, as we move forward and gain new employees and others retire, to change that gap. We have, we have the ability to do that. So...
And we haven't done it.
And that would change, yes, that would change the gap, but it hasn't been done.
Is that correct?
We being, if we're going to do it, let's do it.
So I, that's, that is, right, so that's, but the discussion now is whether or not we fund that at the $14 million level, or, and I'm making my point again. I said before at the beginning of this meeting, this is, this is absolutely the bare bones budget that we need. Should we fund at, at higher levels, on every level? Absolutely. OPEB being one of them, yes, absolutely. But at the same time, I'm confused, because you keep bringing up how the commissioners keep telling us that we're only getting a maintenance of effort.
I'm just going back to your all's.
We're presenting, I'm not finished. I'm not, you're not sure why we're presenting a budget that's over that, and now we're going to, we're going to, we're going to take this needs-based budget, and then we're going to add money to it, even though we do have money, not enough, like every other category, in the line item that you want to add money to.
That, that's not, but that's not what he was saying. We haven't said about presenting a maintenance of effort budget. We're saying that if we present this budget as maintenance of effort, over a maintenance of effort budget, and we have been told historically and this year that we're only getting a maintenance of effort budget, then we have to have a backup plan. We have always said that. We said it last year. You have to have a backup plan, and we had principals sit here this morning and say, that conversation needs to be done now. So we are, it's a very difficult position that we're in.
That's a different discussion than we're having right now about OPEB and whether we funded it 14 million.
No, it's not a different discussion. We're saying, if you want, we heard last night, fully funded budget. Define fully funded. Define a fully funded budget, because we had that discussion last time.
Here's a fully funded budget. Here's the staffing recommendations that we were given.
But those are things we're given. What's the vision of the board? Is that the vision of the board?
Well, we have, we can't discuss that, because we're not in a financial position to discuss that. Neither are we, neither are we in a financial discussion to discuss whether or not we should fund OPEB fully.
We had that discussion last week.
I understand that, but we're not in the financial position to make that choice. We're just not. It's sort of like when you're saying, here's your salary, do you want to get to Mercedes-Benz? No, we can't, we can't even discuss that, because we are limited by what we have to work with.
And that's how institutions go bankrupt, by not funding these obligations.
I didn't hear that we were going to go bankrupt.
Cities go bankrupt because of this.
And we were not, Dr. Miller, we are not not funding OPEB. We are not drawing from OPEB, and we are very cognizant of our, our responsibility. And like I said before, this budget is a rebuilding budget, and we have had a very difficult last five years. Have we funded everything to the amount that we want to fund them at? No. This is the beginning of doing that, and in our strategic planning, I hope that we go forward and say, here's the level that we want to be at for each of these categories. We haven't done that yet. I think this is the best option that we have right now available to us for the position that we're in, in terms of how far we've gone strategically in our planning process, as well as what we have to work with budget-wise, as well as what our critical needs are right this second.
I just hear a fundamental shift in what was at the other, before I was hearing, you should ask for what you need. Now you're saying you're asking for what you think you might get.
I said, we should ask for what we need. However...
So you're saying we don't need OPEB?
No, I'm saying we, we need more than, I'm saying in every single category, Brad, we need more money. However, we have decided that the critical needs are these, and they're funded at these levels. Should we fund them at higher levels? Yes, but we...
But I just want to be clear, then, OPEB is not critical.
Mr. Young?
That is not what I said. You can try to continue to put words in my mouth. That's not going to happen.
I'm trying to ask you what you're saying.
Delaying OPEB for a year or two is not going to do critical damage to the system.
Yes, it will.
No, Mrs. Pellegrino, can you explain how much money we have?
Critical damage to this...
We have over 60 million.
They won't do it today, but it's going to do it.
And right now, we pay as you go?
Excuse me?
As we receive enough contribution, we pay as you go?
We pay currently out of our operating budget.
Over 10 million, correct?
Currently, our pay goes $10 million. That includes retiree contributions also.
But we, we don't have to drop on our reserve funds right now?
No, no, not any time near.
But if we had been on schedule, our trust fund would be over 200 million.
Hold on, hold on. I'm sorry.
Let me finish.
Go ahead.
So the, right now, the need is not as critical, even though long-term there is a need. And I believe we should fund that fully eventually. Over the last five years, six years of MOE, we have lost 14% of the budget due to inflation. If you allow, so right now, what we are doing is, we are pacing it out over the next two to three years and to catch up with the budget that it should be, then we'll be able to fund OPEB completely. But we have to look at the academic needs.
It won't happen, Dr. Bengali.
Do you think about the kids' education? You have to come up with categories to subtract from.
When I, when I think about a critical need, a critical need to me is when a principal from Brunswick says, somebody can't take, whether it's one student or five students, can't take a class when they want to take it today and then next year. That's a critical need.
And a critical need thirty years from now, when you won't have teachers, because you cannot pay them, because you didn't take care of your obligation today.
We are not going to be in that position. If we continue to fund, we are, we are paying as we go our obligations.
And that pay go will continue to increase as you ignore the obligation of finding the future debt.
I beg to differ with you, that we're ignoring, ignoring the obligation would be to zero fund that.
Which was, which happened before we got on.
Well, I wasn't here then, so I can't speak to that.
Yeah, but we, we can go back to the past. We will start going from here, this point on.
Which was cut 10 million last year.
All right, we're not going to, we're not going to resolve this at this point.
Right.
So beyond that, we're talking about these categories. Again, we've gotten off the rails in terms of, are these the priorities we want to fund? Are they the priorities that we want to fund at the levels that are presented to us in the superintendent's operating recommended budget?
And see, that's where I keep going off the, I don't mind supporting the budget, but when you put it like that, how, how can I? Because we, we just identified all these other priorities or values that we have, that we're working toward. So when you put it in a distinct, finite term like that, and like...
I don't see how difficult that is. What's your...
It's difficult for me to get around it.
What's your number one priority in the budget?
It is difficult for me to get around you putting it like that. If you're, if you're, again, is OPEB a priority? Yes, fully fund it then. What, define a fully funded budget. I heard that thrown around. I don't, you know...
I just, I know, I, I want to know, because we really, we still haven't talked about what...
Even if you support this, you're still going to get accused of not sending over a fully funded budget if you don't define what that means.
Well, I would like to know what you think is the number one priority for this, for our budget.
There's multiple priorities.
There's multiple priorities. I don't, I, again, I don't mind.
I wish we could fund multiple priorities, but we cannot.
I think the priorities, as they're identified, are fine. I don't have a problem with that. But when you say, is this the be-all and end-all? No.
But the...
That's how you're saying it.
No, but I'm saying, with the, with the priorities that are funded as they are, OPEB is funded at the level that it is. Now, if you want to increase the level of OPEB funding, you're going to have to decide that you're going to ask for an increase in the recommend, in the budget to send over to the county commissioners, or you're going to have to decrease some items, some money from the priorities that we seem to have coalesced around.
I believe that's what Mr. Young said. He wanted to increase that category. That's what he said.
And I'm, I'm saying to you, this is including the contribution to OPEB, which is not zero. And I want to remind people that, that we're funding it to the level that we felt would continue our commitment to it, but yet allow us to fund other things and, and increase our budget moderately, minimally, because it is a hard sell. I think we all know that it's a hard sell, and that if we continue to just pile money on, I don't know how, what the realistic, how realistic we're being in terms of whether or not we're going to get that funding.
I would like to make a motion.
Yeah, well, I made a motion that...
Was it seconded?
Well, no, because it's...
Say it again, I'm sorry.
So...
Well, then if it wasn't seconded, then the motion...
Well, I didn't even hear it.
I didn't hear it either.
Before I read my motion, let me say, there are two ways to look at priority. One is a long-term priority, one is a short-term priority, critical priority. Academics, to me, is the critical priority. That would be, the OPEB, we can catch up. Right now, the enough money is there in reserve, and it's a pay-as-you-go. So we should consider priorities in two different distinct order. It's not a critical priority right now, to me, as OPEB, but in the long run, it is a priority. Eventually, we do need to have that fun, fully funded and not go bankrupt. But that's not the situation right now. So I move that we adopt the superintendent's budget as a board budget to be forwarded to the commissioner.
I'll second that for discussion.
As it stands.
Discussion?
Well, I, I never did say what my priorities were. One of them is the special ed. There's so many things that are mandated for these kids, and their IPs, and all the things that we do, and we don't have the staff to do it. And so that is a priority to me, to keep in the budget. I, I want all of these things, but there's so many places that we just don't have the staff to do these things. We have cut so much, or we haven't added both over the last few years, and it's a real problem. We've got to do something for all of our kids and all of our staff. But that would be, on this list, that would be one of my priorities.
Mrs. Cusmano?
I would just like to say, as she, as Mrs. Smith brings up about the special ed funding, it is a great frustration to me that every year I hear our board talk about, you know, wanting to support the superintendent's budget, wanting to request that from the county commissioners, wanting our local jurisdiction to pick up the tab for all of these services. The federal dollars coming to special ed have been shrinking and shrinking, and what we need is an active lobbying board that holds our, our higher powers in this country accountable. The state got $250 million for Race to the Top funding. If you just divided that by 24 counties, we would get somewhere in the neighborhood of $10 million for our Common Core initiative. That would go a long way towards closing the gap that we're looking to close in this budget cycle. But we, we won't formally request that the state pick up the tab for the mandates that they're providing to us. I don't feel that I can support this budget. I actually agree with Mr. Young that with, and OPEB is very different to me than looking at all of the columns on the board. It is truly as if we have hired a teacher and their paycheck has bounced. We, we have obligated ourselves to pay it, and then we didn't pay it. So that is very different than wanting to grow something and not being able to grow it, or wanting to provide something and not being able to provide it. We actually have made the promise, and so I would actually, I would like to send a budget that requests a greater sum. I, I would actually like to request, to spread that request to the state and the federal government too, but I, I won't be supported in that effort.
Any other comments?
Yes, I would like to make one comment.
Last one.
You, you are aware that this board has been working with the state delegates. And gradually, we would get some changes in over a long term. Right now, our needs are short-term, so we cannot wait for the federal or state money to compensate for what is needed. I agree with you, that those funds should come to us, but it's not a short...
The shortfall's been happening for decades. It's been happening.
Mrs. Cusmano, let's let him finish.
It's not a short-term solution. We have one week to produce this new budget. So let's focus on the issues which we can tackle right now and, and get a budget out.
Do you have any other comments, Mr. Young?
I'll propose an amendment to the motion that we add an additional $11 million to the OPEB contribution for the request.
I second that.
Well, it has to be accepted by the...
I accept it for discussion purposes.
Well, then, make sure as you do that, it becomes part of the motion, so...
Well, let's put the amendment to vote. I call a question on the amendment itself. Let's put the amendment to vote.
All those in favor of adding $11 million to the proposed budget request specifically for OPEB, is that correct?
Correct.
All those in favor? Dr. Miller, Mr. Young, Mrs. Cusmano, all those opposed? Myself, Mrs. Smith, and Dr. Bengali, the motion fails. We still have a motion on the floor. Could you repeat your motion again?
That we accept the superintendent's budget as a board's budget to be forwarded to VOCC.
I just would like to say that this, this 14 million, or whatever, 11 million, yes, that would be fully funding OPEB. That, ironically, that's the same amount of money that it would cost to fully fund the staffing formula recommendations. But I think this, the superintendent's budget is very reasonable and respectful, because we have had county commissioners that have ran on maintenance of effort budget for the school system. They run on shrinking expenses. So is it, is it everything that we need? No. But we're trying to make up for some lost time in the funding that we've had and then the needs that we've, we've experienced as they grow over the last several years. And so I think it's very respectful, it's very responsible. Is it everything we need? I've said that over and over again. Absolutely, it is not. So I will be supporting the budget as it is.
I have a question of Ms. Pellegrino. I was not on the board then. Was OPEB originally funded by the commissioners?
Yes, originally, the first, I believe, two years were funded by the commissioners, and then they discontinued any additional funding.
So what was the reason? So it became part of the operating budget? So what was the reason, so it became part of the operating budget?
During the year that they were balancing their budget that year, they had cuts to make, and they cut that funding.
And that was a different board of county commissioners, by the way.
That was probably, yes, it was not the seated board.
Well, it's the same as when we go back to our other boards, having done something in the past. Those were different boards. So I just wanted to know, as a historical, where the money came from. OPEB used to come from commissioners' funds, it was not part of the school operating budget.
And throughout the state, it's about half and half. About half of the counties that are funding OPEB are being funded by their local governments.
But are all countries funding OPEB fully?
No, definitely not.
Leslie, do you know if the Board of Ed has ever fully funded our OPEB identified obligation?
No.
We never have.
No.
But are these obligations really firm, or based on some assumptions?
No. Remember, we're making the promise that they will have healthcare coverage. We do not specify necessarily what that coverage will be at the time of their retirement. We say, that is negotiated each year in the negotiated agreement, and can change and has changed over the years.
Mr. Young?
To add point of order, this was advertised as a budget workshop, where we're to discuss the superintendent's budgets and proposed changes. My anticipation was that it would be brought back to the meeting next week, at which point we'd be, we would be voting whether to forward or not, not at today's meeting.
I understand that. We, I don't, there is no, I think the convention of not voting for things at a workshop or a work session is something that is sort of complicit, and we all agree upon. It's not, it's not spelled out in policy or regulation. So it's really the purview of the board. However, I mean, if, if you all feel, this is televised. I want to remind people this is televised. It's an open meeting. You do have a point that traditionally, we haven't taken a vote in work session. I also want to remind the board that we are under the gun. So if this is something that we have to take to Friday's work session and vote on it and publicize it as such, and people would be more comfortable with that, I would entertain that.
I would just like to say, my expectation was the same as Mr. Young's, that today was a work session and be an open discussion in a looser, less formal setting. I, I am concerned that when we do take a vote on moving this budget forward, that it is at a public forum that allows for public comment, recognizing that our, we have agreed that all of our budget conversations will be televised, our formal and informal ones. I am, I am not comfortable taking a vote today without the opportunity for the public to be present and have a voice.
Well, and I want to clarify, this is an open meeting. So I know it's not conducive to people who have work schedules, but just, just so people out there know, this is not a closed meeting, this is an open meeting. Go ahead.
Well, and I, I was surprised when I saw, it, it was on the cover sheet about the meeting today about, we were going to decide if it was a maintenance of effort or above maintenance of effort budget, or that was one of the things that we were looking at. Yeah, on the cover sheet, that's what it says, something about...
That was for the previous board meeting, the cover sheet was previous. For today, explained what the documents were that you had indicated you wanted to disclose.
I checked that last night when you told me, because I was confused by that. But for today's meeting, the cover sheet doesn't say that.
That's, that's what I have on my, on my board docs with, with some of, then it's with the backup documentation. It's, it's on there. But anyway, regardless, I do think that the, the vote should be taken, and we have taken the, the final vote many times on the Wednesday right before the first.
We normally do it in the afternoons.
Well, no, I'm sorry. We normally discuss, make a final decision in the afternoon, and then make the final vote in the evening with the categories. That, that, so there's no rush to make that vote. The vote, we've done it, like I said, every year I've been on, I think it has run up to that Wednesday at the night meeting, and we're scrambling even during dinner to, to change some things. You know, Leslie's always scrambling to get us more information, and I particularly actually would like the snow removal if that one's going to go over.
We're currently working on those numbers with maintenance. It may not be till next week till we have those final numbers.
Right. So that, that is a, you know, another piece of it. But, so I don't think there's any rush to do. I don't want to do it on Friday during the day. I think there's something to be said for doing it at an evening meeting of something of this magnitude.
Well, let me ask you this. Is there, yes?
Then I will draw my motion.
Thank you, Dr. Bengali. Is there, is there, do we feel that there is a need for a Friday budget work session at this point?
I can't be here, so I, I won't speak to that. I have to work.
Well, excuse me, what would be your, our expectations if we come on Friday? What would we be solving?
I, we haven't asked for any more data or information, and I, myself, don't need any more to make a decision. So that really is up to the rest of you as well.
I don't see any need for Friday session, then.
Okay. So we will continue this budget discussion, and we will need to make a decision on the 26th, so that Leslie and her staff can pull together the final budget to get it to the county commissioners on Friday, the 28th.
There, there was some other terms in our public hearing that were, that were, that were bandied about, and it was interesting. I've asked for some people that said it to give me some definitions on it, which was, they wanted us to forcefully advocate and fight, and, and using words like that. So I asked people to, to give me definitions of what that means, because that, that means different things to, to different people. From my perspective, again, this board has, has come a long way as far as advocacy and what we're doing, and as far as our legislators. Unfortunately, just our delegation isn't who we need to talk to as far as budget and money and the impacts that are, that are being had right now. Talking to them goes one way. But I would like to propose for a discussion very soon to have, I would love to invite the governor and the lieutenant governor to come and visit us here, and to have an open roundtable forum or discussion with us about the impacts of MSD, the impacts of these regulations, and the impact on our budget, as we're having our budget discussion, and as they're having their budget discussion. Because I think it's very important that the state realizes that every mandate and what it, what it does to us, every unfunded mandate. So that is how, I think, is advocating to the commissioners. Again, I have a plan there. I would really like to see us, we have, I don't know if we've ever, have we ever been able to get them to come on, into the schools with us?
Who?
The commissioners. I know they've gone occasionally.
I know, I know, Mr. Shreve has.
We've, we've asked before for them to come and spend some time with us and staff, and...
I was going to say, I've, I've only seen them when we've typically, like when we had the tour of Rankin.
Yeah, like a...
Lincoln, whoa.
Yes.
Sorry. Lincoln Elementary, they came.
Like a formal type situation.
Right, more of a...
Right, right.
Celebration of something, a ribbon cutting or something like that.
Right. So I, again, and I've, I've offered this before, I am, again, going to extend the invitation. It's up to you guys if, what you want to do, as far as having, to see if they have any interest in spending a day with me in our schools or with some of our, our staff. I think that they really need to get a feel for what's been going on, if they're going to make a decision. I know they spend time, you know, with the, the fire police, the other decisions that they make, and this is a large chunk of their budget. And I really think it would be a benefit for them to spend some time with us.
We can only invite them.
We can only invite. So if anyone else has any interest, that's, that is what my plans for, for, I guess, going ahead and advocating. And then I think we should also come up with a plan as far as for their public hearing, how we want to broach that topic.
And, and meetings we can participate in before that, because they will be having several work sessions discussing the budget.
Yeah, how we want to participate as a board, and, you know, obviously, we have to come to agreement about the budget first, because that's the first point for me to be very important. If I'm going to strongly advocate for something, I have to strongly believe in it.
Thank you. Yes, Mrs. Smith?
Years ago, but we, I'm telling you this because it might be a good idea. We actually had a school bus, took the whole board and their board, and visited schools. I mean, and it was very, very productive, very helpful.
And if they, if they are more prone to, like, if they, they want to tell us what feeder district, you know, if you want to go to the feeder, you know, we can organize it that way. If they want to come here to central office, we can organize it that way. I don't care. I would just like to extend the invitation, and, and I want it to be open and an actual, you know, exchange of ideas. I don't want it, I want them to feel welcome to the discussion.
There would be no point if they were not.
Correct.
All right. Well, thank you all for your active participation. Thank you, Leslie.
So are we having meeting Friday?
Nothing Friday.
Okay.
Thank you to the staff for providing support and possibly answering questions. I appreciate your, your availability for us today.
And our principals that came.
And our principals, again, thank, I thank them. All right, this meeting is adjourned.